For me? Oh.
You have like gray trees?
Really?
That's all I see.
Right there, that's my curtain.
Looks like a forest fire.
It is.
Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Meeting. And tonight we'll be having, well, starting, we'll be starting with a workshop and then go right on to a regular city council meeting. The council thanks you for being a part of the city government. At regular meetings, the city council takes formal actions on items, holds public hearings, and conducts other business of the city. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco website at www.pascal-wa.gov/agenda. Please note that the city council meetings continue to be held remotely and may be accessed through GoToWebinar. This meeting is being also televised TV on Pasco TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and also streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council meeting videos is available on the city's website. Through Proclamation Number 20-28, Governor Inslee extended the directive making temporary changes to the Open Public Meeting Act. These virtual meetings will continue until the OPMA restrictions are lifted. And then lastly, the public may submit their comments and their questions for items not on the agenda by contacting the city manager or city clerk or using the feedback form on the city's website. So with that, once again, reminder, everybody, uh, to, to remind everybody to keep wearing our masks. You know, um, as, as I move forward and, and move it on, it seems like it's the best defense, uh, that we know up to today. And so I want to continue to encourage everyone to please do your part and, uh, respect others and, uh, and consider wearing the mask and social distancing at all times. As you can see, we're plenty, uh, more than six feet apart in this room. And, uh, there's only a limited amount of people here and we have our hand sanitizers in the, in the back and continue to sanitize these areas every time we use them. So thank you for that. So, uh, we have a lot on our agenda today, so I'm gonna try to move this meeting right along as we have a lot of things to talk about. And with that, I'd like to, uh, have a roll call, please.
Council members, Alvarado.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Milney.
Present.
Roach.
Present.
Serrano.
Present.
Mayor Protem Barajas.
Present.
And Mayor Martinez.
Present, thank you.
Seven accounted for.
Thank you. May we rise for the flags, Lou, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. And next we'll move, uh, right on to, uh, as I said earlier, that we're gonna start with the workshop and, um, let's see here, and the first item for discussion, did I miss anything? The first item for discussion today is the 2021 Adviloram Tax Levy and General Fund Revenue, uh, review. So Mr. Zabel, would you like to kick this off?
Well, just a, just a couple comments by me and then, uh, Finance Director Siggel's gonna walk us through not only Adviloram tax, but a number of the other major revenues, uh, in the city's general fund. And, uh, a brief PowerPoint, but we'll get through it. It's, this is part of your, your annual, uh, budget process. And one of those things is that we need to establish a property tax rate going into next year. I'll, I'll do a, what do they call that? Spoiler alert, staff is not proposing one. In terms of rate, so, uh, and with that, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, Director Siggel.
Since Dave took over, my best piece of news.
Sorry.
Uh, evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, it is that time of the year again, uh, property taxes are usually, uh, at least in the council chambers, uh, considered to be start of the budget, uh, discussion. However, I would like to express that, um, first let me see how I can get my PowerPoint presentation here. Oh, thank you. Uh, I would like to just remind everyone that the budget, though we're having the discussion at the council chambers here, starts a lot earlier than today. Uh, this year has definitely been unusual, I shouldn't have to say that due to COVID. Uh, but we did start early in February and March, um, listening to our community members, uh, in terms of what it is that they need and from the city. And with that, we get into our council retreats and, um, and finalization of our council goals, which happened a little bit later this year due to COVID. Uh, but we usually take those goals and then start the budget process via the department requests. And we look at what are the things that our departments need to deliver on what your goals are and what our community members need. Uh, this year we did things a little bit different. Uh, we, we essentially did everything all together, so it's been a lot of back and forth process. But, uh, in August, we did department requests, uh, but also in August, in September and November, ongoing for future months as well. We'll be doing a lot of analysis and meetings to talk about budget. Uh, and in September, of course, we finalized our council goals and, uh, received a preliminary assessed valuation from Franklin County, uh, which is a, a critical piece of information, um, in terms of property tax, uh, levy hearings that we are conducting today and also the general fund revenues. Uh, you should expect to see, uh, budget hearings coming up in November, uh, and of course, the adoption of the budget in November and December. At any point, uh, please free, feel free to stop me. Um, we, I usually present this every year, so I'm very used to it, but Washington State's property taxes are very complicated. Um, so anytime, feel free to stop me and, uh, and ask any questions you might have. Uh, overall, in, in Washington State, no local government can increase property tax levy more than 1% in a given year. And usually for any cities or, uh, jurisdiction that is over 10,000, um, in population, cannot increase the rate by either 1% or, uh, a rate of inflation, which is called implicit price deflator. Uh, and this year actually, it is less than 1%. So if the city, uh, was to increase its property taxes, it could only increase by .6%. Unless, of course, council chose to adopt a resolution of substantial need. Uh, and IPD is a little bit different of an economic metric, but it's very similar to CPI. It's always less than CPI, but kind of a, something that indicates inflation in the market. This is, uh, City of Pasco's assessed valuation trend. Uh, I wanted to go all the way back to 2000 because I think it tells a story that is important to recognize and appreciate. Uh, from 2000 to 2020, uh, the assessed valuation for City of Pasco has gone up by more than six times, so almost 6.69, something like that. And, um, also, if you look at the slope of the increase in assessed valuations, um, since 2015 and 16, you see the, the rate of increase is much higher than it has been in the past. Um, so that really speaks to the city's growth. I would also like to add that due to the rules around the increase in property taxes, just because the assessed valuation is going up does not mean that the property taxes are going up at the same rate as well. Uh, because assessed valuation in a calculation of a property tax rate is your denominator. Uh, and your numerator can only increase by 1%. So your numerator is kind of going up by only 1%, 1% on years like this, .6%. Uh, but your assessed valuation for us, you know, is going up by 8, 10, 13%, right? So your rates are going down, um, going down at a, at the similar clip as your assessed valuation is going up as well. And that's a graph that I will have later on in this presentation. Bank capacity, uh, that was a really big discussion in 2018, if council remembers. Bank capacity is something where you have that capability to increase your rate by 1% or the IPD, whichever is lower. Uh, but let's say that you chose to not increase it that year. Uh, then the, the jurisdictions have the capability to bank that and essentially say, "We want that money to stay with our taxpayers, uh, for the time being." And so, uh, but if there's a need in future, we can increase our property taxes at a higher rate than 1%. So essentially, it kind of accumulates in your bank, hence a bank capacity. Uh, we used all of our bank capacity back in, um, 2018 was when the action was taken, but really 2019 when the taxes were levied for major infrastructures like the relocation of the fire stations. Uh, and right now, we have, and last year, we banked, um, the capacity, the 1%. And so right now, we have $139,000, for the lack of better words, in our property tax bank.
And if I could just jump in real quick, I mean, you, you can raise it, uh, more than 1% with the vote of the people, but the bank capacity allows council to do that with a council vote. So you can exceed the 1% with a majority vote of the council. With, using bank capacity.
Thank you, that is correct. Um, with, with this wall of numbers is essentially how much we've been levying. So your first line, I'm not sure if viewers at home can see my, uh, cursor here, uh, but you will see what we are levying right now, about $11 million. And this, um, uh, this is our staff's recommendation that we do not take the .6% this year, so you'll see this area is blank. Uh, 10,000 is assessed, uh, state utility assessment that we just kind of have to make an estimate each year. And this is what comes from, um, our new construction. And so almost 388,000, our new construction value this year was 214 million dollars. So this is where this number is coming from. And so our total levy amount would be 11 million dollars or 11.4 million dollars. What you will see, do, uh, that due to our tax, um, is that it'll go down from 1.808 to 1.715. And essentially what that means is for a home that is, uh, $300,000, um, it will cost about $514 per year for City of Pasco's property tax, and that is about a decrease of $28. If you chose to go the route of, uh, taking the IPD, which is the .6%, um, then, um, the rate would be 1.725, still a decrease. Uh, and, um, the decrease would be about $25 for a home that is assessed at $300,000. Is this clear for everyone? Does anyone have any questions on that? Okay? Of course, we like to always compare ourselves to our neighbors. And, um, so this is a current year data. Uh, and, um, you will see a general rate here, which is essentially the regular property tax. Uh, you'll also see a total rate, which also includes all of the voted debt, um, or voted bonds, like, uh, many times building fire stations, libraries, things like that. So City of Richland, this year will be collecting, uh, about $19 million. Uh, City of Kennewick, 13.6, and we would be, uh, collecting $11 million. And if you had a home that is assessed at, uh, $300,000, how much property taxes you'd be paying for each of these cities? Now, I'm sure there's many people going, I definitely don't pay just $542. And for that, I'm just going to skip, I, I will show you a graph later in terms of where all of your property taxes go. Uh, but the trend here is you'll see that the trend is down, almost follows the trajectory of your assessed valuation that goes up as well. Um, so if council was to take the, uh, the recommended path, then you would see a 1.715 of rate, uh, for the next tax year. So we're, I'm kind of moving away from property taxes at this point. So if anybody has any questions in terms of, um, property taxes, this would be a really good time to ask the question.
So, Richard, were you gonna move to, you alluded, you had alluded to, you know, people don't pay that, that amount?
Yeah.
Are you, are you getting?
I, I will be getting to that, yes.
I, I'll note on this, this slide, uh, just for members of the audience might be looking, that little peak at 2018, that's the exercise of the bank capacity.
Yeah.
For the fire station projects. So, and, and you can tell within a couple of years, we're already back down to, actually, a lesser rate than what we were before we used the bank capacity. Cause you had added, uh, assessed valuation over the last few years.
Richard, this is Councilmember Roach.
Yes.
This is based off of our assessed value at Franklin County.
That is correct.
And so this is if we, we also agree with the assessed value of our property?
Uh, we have looked at, um, we have looked at some of the commercial, or sorry, some of the new construction and it's, um, it's in line with what we've seen in previous years in terms of the permit values that we have, um, we have issued at the city. So we have done, uh, that validation, um, in terms of whether we agree with, um, all of the assessed valuation. We have talked with the assessors office, uh, in terms of their process, um, that they use. And, um, and they are increasing the assessed valuation, I definitely have seen that over the years.
Thank you.
I, I guess I would throw out there too, just, just historically, and I, and it's not, it's not just in Franklin County. It's, uh, you know, assessors are somewhat conservative and they don't, they don't, uh, move the numbers around as the market fluctuates. And right now, we're in a pretty hot market, so you're seeing houses sell for probably more than what their assessed valuation is in many, many cases. Probably more than not, they sell for, uh, more than the assessed valuation. Um, but that's, you know, it's across the board on all property categories. So while there's a difference maybe between what a property might have sold for and what its assessed valuation is, if everything is, and I, I don't want to use the term, cause I don't want to, I don't raise the ire of the county assessor, but if everything's equally undervalued as compared to market, then it really doesn't impact us that much. It's only if it's certain classifications were at market, but others were below market, then you can make the argument that might be a shift in, uh, you know, an equity shift in who's paying more property taxes. You know, commercial or, yeah.
When you, that you, you're talking about residential and commercial, correct?
Yeah, I'm, I'm talking about all classifications of property, yeah. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we're moving on to, this is a continuation overall because, you know, you, you can talk about property taxes and your options, but really, um, property taxes are, there's a lot of other revenues that complement property taxes for us as a city to provide, um, some of the essential services like police, fire, recreation, council, city manager's office, finance, things like that. And so this is a review of all of the general fund revenue sources. And what we've done is kind of given you a snapshot of what we have received, actuals in the past. Um, 2017 and 18 were annual budgets, but I wanted to kind of give you, um, oranges to oranges comparison there. Um, so combine the two years' actuals and then what we're estimating for 2019 and, uh, proposing, uh, on the 2021 and 22 budget. Of course, the budget is still something that we're working through, so these are not final numbers. Um, but I will, um, uh, stop right here and, um, do a, do a good mea culpa on the estimates. Uh, with, uh, for the last four, five months, um, I have been reporting to the council that we will be, uh, expecting at least 10% less in, in sales tax. Um, we have gotten four months of actual information since the pandemic at this point. We, the last information that we have is as of July. And what we've seen is actually an increase in sales taxes. And all of the increases in the sales taxes are coming from auto sales, uh, home improvements, uh, and, um, and construction. Uh, huge amounts in construction, huge amounts in, uh, auto sales, RV sales, uh, used car sales market is doing really good. Um, so at this point, with four year, uh, four months of actual data post pen, or during pandemic, and, um, I feel fairly confident that we will be meeting, if not exceeding our target, instead of seeing a decrease in 10% um, in, in sales tax. Um, also talking to my peers, um, across the, across the state and the country, uh, what we're also finding, especially for accountants like us who like to be conservative, is that this is an extremely difficult year to make estimates for future. There's a lot of uncertainty in the market. Um, and, uh, we all have been in, you know, in contact with Department of Revenue saying, "Is this sales number right?" Because we were expecting a decline, but we're, you know, we're seeing increases, so feel like we're reading something wrong. Uh, so the idea is very much that we will do our budgets with the best and, um, best information available at this point, but also with understanding that some major changes, um, to the economic conditions will probably need some major revisions, maybe, uh, during our mid-biennium adjustments. The good thing is that we have some really good and healthy reserves, um, so we're not in a state where, uh, we have to panic. So with that, um, major general fund revenue sources taxes are it. You will see that 21%, 31%, uh, 21% bar on the side. That is what, um, 21% of all of the general fund revenue are property taxes and 31% of all general fund revenue are retail taxes. So your, um, taxes make up for the largest part of your general fund revenue.
Just a, just a general comment.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, it, I can, just, I can see how it would be a very hard time to estimate because, because of the pandemic, as we all know, everybody went and as everybody, everybody knows, all the shelves were empty.
Mm-hmm.
So there was a lot of people buying a lot of stuff. Um, at some point, there's gotta be a dip. Uh, I, I'm only.
Yeah.
Estimating or guessing.
Yeah.
Uh, but yes, I can see how it's really hard to forecast, but the good thing is that we're doing good for now.
Yeah.
And, uh, I'm glad to see that, that we're at that lower level of taxing for property taxes and, and than the other cities, uh, in the tri-city, so that's good, thank you.
And, and thank you for your comment, Mayor, that's been, that's been harder to accept for some than others. Uh, the Finance Director has learned that the public doesn't think like Finance Directors.
Yeah, it, it has been an eye-opening experience for me, uh, definitely. Um, so overall, uh, you will see a big jump in the property taxes there and that is because we, we decided to take the bank capacity, um, starting in 2019. So you'll see that big increase. And then, um, the, the proposed budget, um, is a little bit different than what you might see on, on the last, um, um, table that I showed you. And the only minor decrease or in, changes to that is that we account for some of the delinquencies within the collection of the property taxes themselves. So, uh, talking about the graph in terms of I definitely don't pay only $542 to City of Pasco, um, the rest of the, uh, the rest of the taxes that, um, a, a resident might pay goes to many other places, like the school district is a major one, um, you have state property tax, um, then City of Pasco, uh, county, uh, Port of Pasco and some of the others like, um, I think mosquito control, there's, there's some small ones there. So this is our sales tax. Um, so you'll see about where, where thinking at this point that we're going to get almost about $35 million in sales tax. Uh, this includes the criminal justice sales tax and public safety sales tax as well. We are expecting a dip for next year, but again, just keep in mind that, um, you know, who knows? It could be more than what we, uh, had budgeted, or maybe it could be less, but we will definitely be keeping you in the loop in terms of the trends that we're seeing. Um, and when somebody buys something at the City of Pasco, not all 8.6% comes to the city. Um, a large portion, 6.5% goes to the state. Um, the city gets .85% of the normal, the local sales tax. And then we get 60% of the public safety sales tax, which is the .3% there. And I believe, um, about, there, there's some population distribution on the criminal justice, but we get about 60% of that criminal justice sales tax as well. Um, so it, it is not that when you pay, you, when you buy something at the City of Pasco, all of it comes to the City of Pasco. And where do they come from? A, a large portion, which is good, from retail trade. Uh, retail trade includes auto sales. And, um, in my last calculation, uh, about 24% of our total sales tax, not just retail, just total sales tax came from auto sales, which is really good. But it also is something to just kind of keep in the back of your mind in terms of larger economic sentiment for people. Uh, you might have a secure job, you might have, um, you know, you might be doing well financially, but, um, if the interest rates are too high, then people might not buy as expensive of a car or if they're feeling, if they're hearing a lot of bad news, they might feel less secure. So those are things that are a little bit, um, volatile. Um, but again, I will say that I would not have expected sales tax to increase during a pandemic. So at this point, what do I know? Um, and of course, construction, 15%, uh, wholesale trade, which are big machineries and things like that, uh, 9%. Um, and, um, accommodation and food services at 7%. But the largest is, um, within the retail trade is our auto, auto sales. Um, the other large, um, revenue source is utility tax, which is essentially, um, you're allowed to charge 6%, up to 6%, um, through, uh, state law for any of the utilities like cable, uh, telephone, gas, sewer, water, things like that. Uh, City of Pasco residents voted a long time ago to add 2.5% on top of that. Um, and, um, to do various things, and right now, we use that for overlay and some of the other, other activities. And, um, so tho, those are the increases that you see there. A large part of the increases that you see are mainly related to growth, but then also rate increases, things like that. The next category is fees and charges. This is, um, this is a little bit different in how we present it. Um, general government, uh, public safety, culture and recreation, and economic environment. And they're not as intuitive as some of the other ones. Um, so general government is essentially, um, a large part of this revenue is our admin charges, essentially recoupment of our overhead from some of our other funds like, uh, our utility, ambulance, um, anything that is not general fund. Um, so what does it cost to run a city in terms of support services like the administrative and community services, city managers, finance, uh, council, things like that? Uh, public safety, these, these are revenues that we mostly get from our partners. Uh, and, um, those are, um, like our school resource officers that we partner with, uh, Pasco School District. So, um, presence of our police, or the services of our police officers, uh, that are get, getting reimbursed. Also, our, uh, fire station at, um, at the airport, and so we get reimbursed from Port of Pasco. Uh, economic environment is mostly, uh, services of our engineering department to some of the other funds, um, mostly our utility funds. And culture and recreation are essentially our pool, um, revenue, uh, some of our recreation classes, um, things like that. You will see some decreases, mostly related to COVID. Uh, we are anticipating, um, of course, less revenue this year because most of those services, um, we've not been able to give. Uh, and we're anticipating some level of recovery in 2022, but, um, being really con, conservative about what that will look like. Intergovernmental, um, these are funds that we mostly get from state and of course, there's grants. Um, PUD, um, public utility district privilege tax. Um, there's a complicated math, but it's essentially if you have, uh, any facilities that generate, um, power, uh, for the public. So if you've got those kinds of facilities nearby, you get a certain percentage based on. So if you've got those kinds of facilities nearby, you get a certain percentage based on um on some um calculations there. Uh, and we are anticipating a decrease on that, and that is a recommendation from um our uh partners at M R S C. Uh, they are anticipating a decrease in this revenue statewide uh for the next year. Uh, and of course, the liquor board profits and excise tax, um uh this is um this is something that I think state always tries to take back to plug their holes. So it's always uh has a has a warning flag right next to it, but we're hoping that's not going to happen uh in the next two years. And we'll be able to uh maintain what we've been receiving in the past. And you'll see a big jump this year, and that is mostly the the local cares uh uh grants that we've received. Uh, some of the grants uh that we've included for the next year are related to um some of the equipment purchases that our fire department uh has received that will save us a lot of money um in terms of having to buy them outright. Um, so tho- those are the major ones for two thousand twenty one and twenty two. And stop me whenever um you need me to. Uh, and the next one is our licenses and permits, uh building permits being the most significant one in this category. Um, and um you'll see that we are being very optimistic about our building permits. Um, I think we are the right sized community um to, I don't want to say the word benefit, but definitely having people come to our community, um the the right amenities that we're providing with airport and you know restaurants and culture and wine and all of that stuff. Um, that um we will continue to see the growth that we've been seeing at least through two thousand twenty one and two thousand twenty two. So that's those are kind of the sentiments behind the numbers here. Uh, and business license, um, we saw a big increase in two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty. And the reason for that is because we implemented the state uh the transition to uh B L S, which is the Business License Services with the state, uh which made it a lot easier for businesses to even realize that they needed to get a license with the city. Uh, but then also made it very convenient for them to get it. So we had huge increases in the number of um businesses uh that were licensed to us just from that one action. We are anticipating a little bit of a decrease there just with so many businesses being closed and pro- anticipating that it's going to take them some time to come back. And animal license, um, this is also the other implementation that we did. Uh, we are uh um you will see the decrease there in two thousand nineteen and twenty. Uh, and a large part of that decrease is related to just um late fees. So people were paying a lot of late fees because we had fewer options for them to come in and pay. Uh, and now that they have more options and they can do it online and we've streamlined a lot of things, we're finding that people are paying on time and we're not having to charge them late fees. Uh, also, we did more of a rolling license rather than all being expired at once. And so we're able to take care of people in a in a much more efficient manner. So that's that's the decrease that you see, and we anticipate fairly standard operation for future. Fines and forfeits, um, the very small part of the of the uh general fund revenue overall, as you can see, one percent, um, so two percent overall. Um, we are expecting a higher level of fines and forfeits overall. Um, but I would like to speak to this just a little bit. Um, and the reason that you see the jump is because of Red Flex or the the electronic uh cameras. Thank you. Um, I'm thinking of the vendor. And um however, this is, we're talking about revenue here, and so you see the jump. But revenue is not the full picture. When we uh as council uh directed us to collect the revenue, the expenses related to the program, and the remainder of that goes to transportation safety programs. Uh, and so we've been doing that and we've been tracking. Um, as of last week, uh our net uh in that program is ninety two thousand dollars. Um, and um so you might see a a jump in revenue, but there's also a jump in expenses related to that. Uh, so I'd just like to kind of point that out. And these are just some of the other miscellaneous uh categories um with um some of the rent.
Richard, could I could I just jump in on the
Absolutely.
Yeah, on the safety camera issue, and I I appreciate Richa noted uh for council. And we're not here necessarily to talk about expenses tonight. But uh council recalls back to that program was never about making uh money for the city. It's about safety at those two uh major intersections. So you're gonna get a report, uh I think at our next workshop uh from Public Works that goes in and police that kind of goes into uh what the impact of the program has been without without spoiling it. There has been a decrease in certain types of uh accidents in both those locations. So uh enough so that I I think council and the public can be able to look at that and see a cause and effect in the decrease uh without getting into it. But uh there's a cost to to operating it too. There's a cost for renting the equipment and the officers and the court to process the citations and those type of things, so. Sorry, Richard. Thank you.
Thank you. So overall, in summary, um, I always like to tie something to two thousand sixteen because that is when I started. So it's a really important year. Cities assess valuation has increased by seventy percent in the last four years, and that is significant. Um, I remember my first chart where, you know, today I presented three hundred thousand, and I believe my first one was a hundred and fifty. And that was a little bit low, but it wasn't that far in terms of what a home, you know, an average home might cost. Um, and um we do recommend that council reserve the property tax for future purposes uh and bank it, and um that you're looking at one point seven one five pers uh a dollar and seventy cents, essentially seventy one cents per thousand assessed valuation, uh which is a decrease from the prior year. Uh, and this general fund revenue is really a draft. We're going, we're still working through the budget process, but um if any new information comes along, then we would definitely be um revising it and um and coming back to you, of course, you know, throughout the budget process and after. Um, because it really depends on some big actions from Congress and that might um really impact the the revenue sources for us.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Richard. I would like to open it up for council if you have any comments or questions.
It's Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, Mr. Maloney, uh Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and uh thank you, uh Director Sigil for the presentation. Um, I am as shocked as you are, if not uh more so, that our sales revenue is increasing um in spite of our our uh the pandemic. Um, and and that gives me a lot of assurance that we're gonna be in good stead to be able to at least maintain our levels of service and staff uh without having to make any dramatic cuts or deep or dig deep into our um into our preserves. Um, so I I appreciate that, and I I very much support continuing to save uh the capacity for a rainy day. I I I I know we were all very cognizant of what of of what that was like to 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 draw that down to support the new fire stations. Um, and certainly, I think I'm 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 very supportive of us keeping uh of putting that money back aside for when we have something in the future. So um appreciate the 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 presentation. Um, appreciate the conclusion, a very supportive of of staff recommendation here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Anybody else? Well, I would just like to say thank you very much for the presentation. Um, I really would like the city to uh to recognize, you know, the percentage that actually comes to the city. So as we get, uh you know, we do the best we can, uh the staff and council do the best we can to try to keep our city looking beautiful and running it as efficiently as possible. But sometimes uh when things get tough, you know, uh a lot of people may may in may say, I pay a lot of taxes, what's going on?
Mm hmm.
Well, there is just a small portion of that tax that actually goes to the city. Uh, it's not an excuse, it's just a reality, and I think this presentation pre- presented that very well. So thank you for the report, uh uh, Richard, and uh an- anything else?
Um, I would just like to say that um you should be uh come November, you should be seeing a lot of budget meetings um in your in your agenda. And um also um during the regular meeting here tonight, uh there is a a ordinance for you and a public hearing um in place if you'd like to move forward with the recommended option.
Well, thank you for that. Uh, uh in spite, I mean, it's no secret, in spite of this pandemic, it uh it would be it wouldn't look very positive if we had any other uh recommendations brought to us. So thank you for the hard work and thank you for that. And with that, uh I am going to um adjourn the special workshop meeting and with uh and move right on over to our regular city council meeting. If you might may here. And with the housekeeping issues out of the way, I want again want to call this meeting, uh regular council meeting to order. And we we have um an item, we'll start on item number four with a consent agenda. All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by roll call vote by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If further discussion is desired by the council members or the public, the item may be removed, excuse me, removed from the consent agenda to the regular agenda and considered separately. Uh, the first on the consent agenda would be approval of the meeting minutes uh to approve the meeting minutes of the Pasco City Council Remote Meeting held on September twenty first and remote special meeting and workshop held on September twenty eighth, two thousand twenty. Next on the consent agenda would be to approve the claims in the total amount of three million one hundred seventy five thousand eight hundred and ten dollars and seventy two cents. Item C, uh to approve resolution number three three nine five, granting limited authority to the city manager regarding acquisition of real property, granting of easements over right of way relating to private or public developments, projects, and other matters relating thereto. So with that
Mister Mayor, I was wondering if there was any further uh of pulling out item C and just hearing other discussion from council members on this item. I I didn't feel like I was at a a clear understanding as to, you know, where the council uh rested on this item.
Okay, well, if there's a request to remove item C of the consent agenda, and we can move that to uh what would be the most appropriate place to move that to?
Put it under unfinished business.
Unfinished business? We'll move it to unfinished business, uh uh number nine?
Number nine, yeah.
Okay. With that, um, if Mayor Pro Tem Barajas would like to consent, uh 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 can make a motion with the uh of the consent agenda as amended?
Uh, this is Mayor Pro Tem Glancho Barajas, and I move to approve the consent uh consent agenda as amended.
I'll second.
All right. There's been a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. It's been seconded by Councilmember Alvarado. Uh, we have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Serrano.
Yes.
Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes.
Councilmember Maloney.
Yes.
Councilmember Milne.
Yes.
Councilmember Roach.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Barajas.
Yes.
Mayor Martinez.
Yes. Okay, passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Next, we'll move to proclamations and acknowledgements. And tonight, uh we have a proclamation for Hispanic Heritage Month. And today we have with us um on the line, uh to my knowledge, there's uh Mister Felix Vargas, uh Mister Gabriel Portugal, Mrs. Gracie Weiss-Jamal, and if I'm not mistaken, Martin Valades is with us tonight. And I would like to start by uh by reading the proclamation. And this proclamation again is the National Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas America, America's cultural diversity has helped strengthen and define our country for hundreds of years. And whereas during National Hispanic Heritage Month, we recognize the millions of Hispanic Americans who love, whose love of family, hard work, and community have helped unite us as people and sustain us as a nation. And whereas we remember all those proud Hispanic American patriots who fought and died for our for our country in every war and conflict since our founding. And whereas as entrepreneurs and public servants, scholars and artists, Hispanic Americans have provided wisdom, energy, and leadership in both small and large communities across this country. And whereas while many Hispanic Americans today are thriving, others are still struggling to overcome obstacles, including language and cultural barriers. And whereas we are committed to advancing racial equity through our policies, programs, and services. And whereas we renew our commitment to ensuring that all Hispanic Americans have access to the opportunities needed to pursue and realize their dreams. And whereas we wholeheartedly recognize and thank the Hispanic Americans risking their lives and continuing to provide essential services throughout the COVID nineteen pandemic. Now therefore, I Saul Martinez, Mayor of the City of Pasco, Washington, and behalf of the entire city council do hereby hereby proclaim September fifteenth through October fifteenth, two thousand twenty, as Hispanic Heritage Month. And in the City of Pasco, and urge all citizens to join and support the city's celebration of the rich heritage of our Hispanic residents. So with that, uh I would like to give, uh this is, this is wonderful. I'd like to give an opportunity. We'll start with Mister Felix Vargas. Are you on the line, Mister Vargas?
Uh, yes, Mister Mayor, I am.
And uh I want to present this proclamation. Do you have any words you would like to share with the the community tonight?
Uh, yes, sir. Um, I'm pleased to join other members of the Hispanic uh community to accept this proclamation. And I want to thank uh the the city council for issuing the proclamation. Uh, in so doing, our city joins the nation in honoring Hispanics uh for their many contributions to the nation. In times of war and peace, Hispanics have been there for America, and have been there for Pasco. In accepting the the proclamation, I wish to draw attention to a very special group of Hispanics. And it is those essential workers in agriculture who risked their lives during the COVID nineteen and the recent wildfires to complete the harvest and to put meat on our tables. They have paid and are paying a pretty heavy price in doing this. In most cases, they have done this with insufficient or delayed support from their employers. I'll give you three examples. One is the situation that developed at Taisas Meat Market, a meat plant uh beginning back in in March and April and May, where you had during a short period of time, close to two hundred and eighty uh workers infected with a virus with three dying. Secondly, during the wildfires that we've had recently, you've had hundreds of Hispanics in agricultural suffering from from smoke inhalation. The fires were coming from Oregon, from the counties of Douglas and Okanagan, and even from the region close to us from Yakima down to the tri cities. Many have suffered as a result of of uh the smoke. And now, uh members of the city council, we have the situation that Twin City Foods, just here in our own town, where scores of Hispanics have have tested positive for the virus, but two haven't died thus far. It's a situation where I would ask that the city council investigate to can to look at the conditions and to insist that the employer really is providing the full protections. Don't leave this just to the Ben Franklin Health District. So really, in addition to the thousands of Hispanics whose name graced the Vietnam Wall in Washington, D.C., we now have thousands more who make a different type of sacrifice daily. And it is for them, uh Mister Mayor and members of the city council that I accept this proclamation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mister Vargas, and uh uh appreciate your words. And um it it is quite an honor of and and it is very uh humbling to know that there's a lot of people out there, Hispanic Americans, that are 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 feeding our country and doing what are the things that they're risking their lives to do to to uh not only survive for themselves, but to help us in this great country. Uh, next, Mister Portugal, uh Uh next, Mister Portugal, uh do you have any words you'd like to share? Or Ms. Gracie Vaishamal, are you on the line tonight?
I am, thank you. I just wanna say it's an honor to be here with all you guys and to take part of this proclamation. And I just want to applaud the city of Pasco for always involving the community and embracing diversity. So muchas gracias for all that you do and we are Pasco, somos Pasco.
Thank you, thank you, Gracie. Appreciate that very much. Uh Mister Martin Valades, are you on the line tonight?
Yes, I am. Um. So thank you for the invitation and thank you for this proclamation. Uh. Uh as was already noted, you know Latinos are an important part of this country. Um in terms of contributions, uh of course, you know, I'm representing the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce and in terms of business. Latinos, you know, if it weren't for the the many Latino businesses that have been started in the last. Year or two, you know, the the rate of growth of uh entrepreneurship would would really be almost non-existent. So it's uh, you know, so as you know. Entrepreneurship is is part of the the American fabric, but also part of the immigrant fa- fabric, part of the Latino fabric. But I think above and beyond the businesses, what I want to say is that. Latino history, Latino culture is American culture, right? We are not separate from, we are America. We've been here, people of Latino heritage have been on this continent and on what is today united before the British arrived. And so I want us to all remember that, that we have been here. We are not immigrants. We are an essential and a historic part of this country. We are not others, we are us. And I was want us all to remember that, that we are America. That we are a a group, of course, within America, but without us, America would not exist. Without our historic, our current and our future contributions, America would not be what it is. So thank you all for taking time to recognize this. And I do wanna recognize, uh as Felix says, you know, those of those out there who who don't have the luxury of staying home. Uh don't have the luxury of working from from uh their computers, don't have the luxury of being able to to have health care. And health insurance and all that. So those people that are out there working in uh day in, day out. In the fields, in the factories, in the restaurants, um I wanna commend them for all that they do, not just for themselves and for the families, but for our country. Um and again, you know, I wanna recognize them um with this uh proclamation. So thank you all and have a great evening.
Thank you, Mister Valades, and I'd like to give Mister Portugal one more opportunity if you're on the line. Well, with that said.
Mister Mayor.
Yes, yes, Mister uh Zabel.
Yeah, if I if I could, I I would, there is another piece to this. Uh we ha- we also have on the line uh our um. Senior Management Analyst Angela Pashon, and it has to do with the social social media campaign, kind of a grassroots recognition. Uh piece we're doing for the event as well. So with that, uh with your indulgence, uh turn it over to Angela for a minute.
Wonderful. Angela?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um so through recommendation with the Inclusion, Diversity and Equity Commission and in addition to the proclamation tonight. We would like to encourage our community to share stories and profiles that highlight the history, heritage and accomplishments. Of Hispanic and Latino Americans. So starting tomorrow, you'll see uh through the city's Facebook page. Uh a post where we wanna encourage the community to have a conversation. Um, you know, provide stories of, you know, the significance of individuals in our community and. Uh Hispanic Americans in general, so we can all continue to learn and continue the conversation to um understand. And um learn from each other.
Alright, that's great. Well, thank you very much for that, Miss Pashon. And one last thing I'd like to to comment on is what's most beautiful is that this community, the city of Pasco. Um is. And the members of this community are willing to embrace every culture and in this case, the the Hispanic American culture enough. To make the dreams a reality for many, many people that work hard and work for the moment. Um that they could make a difference in their community and get to the point where you would embrace it enough to make. A Hispanic uh your mayor of the city of Pasco. So um I couldn't be more proud of a community. And you know, it's taken many years, perhaps, it's taken a a lot of um. A lot of details, a lot, a lot of work to get to where we're at today, but I am proud of our community that they would embrace every culture. And and the Hispanic Americans of this community uh to the point where we could all see each other as one. And just do what's a greater good for everyone in this community and I appreciate that and wanna congratulate the city of Pasco for that. So thank you very much for that. So with that, is is there any comments or questions by the council?
This is Councilmember Roach, and I just wanted to say thank you to Mister Vargas, Miss uh. Vaishmal and to Mister Valdez Torres for being here and accepting that. I really appreciate the work that they do in this community.
Thank you, Councilmember Roach. Alright, with that, we'll move right along. Uh next to our agenda and once again, thank everyone for for showing up tonight and being a part of this. Uh next, we'll move right along to our. Uh reports and committees uh and and officers. Um we'll ask to keep it short if you do have something, so we can move right along as we have a lot more to do. So is there any reports or uh. Comments from the the council that they'd like to report? Alright, with that, we'll move right along to number seven hearings and council actions on ordinances and resolutions relating thereto. The first one is. Uh what we had our workshop about, uh two thousand twenty one ad valorem tax levy. And um I think Richa's presentation was wonderful. And with that, before opening the public hearing, I would ask. Um i- is there any other briefing that you would like to add, Richa or Mister Zabel to to this item?
None, Mister Mayor.
Okay.
From from my end.
So does the council have any questions of staff before I open this public hearing? If not, um. I would like to open this hearing. Uh the public hearing is open for comments and I will call upon. Uh anybody who uh would like to speak on this and I don't have anybody for this particular item on the agenda. So we're going once, make it formal, go on twice, uh a third time. So this hearing is closed. So with that, um. I'm going to close the public hearing and now I will ask for a motion from the council uh on this topic. Mayor Pro Tem Barajas, would you like to entertain a motion?
Yes, Mayor. Uh I move to adopt ordinance number four, four, nine, seven. Providing for an increase in the regular property taxes of the city for levy in twenty twenty and collection in the twenty twenty one tax year. Preserving levy levy capacity to for future years and providing for related matters and further authorized publication. By summary only.
Okay, uh there's a motion to adopt ordinance number four, four, nine, seven. Do I hear a second?
It's Councilor Maloney, I'll second. Get that?
Uh there was second by Councilmember Maloney. So with that, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Uh the next hearing uh is on a, excuse me, street vacating, uh vacating the remainder of East Duluth Street. Uh so. I'd like to to conduct a public hearing on that and before uh we open the public hearing, I would ask. Uh if staff has a brief report to to related to this here, to this item?
Yeah, yes, thank you, Mister Mayor. This is Rick White, Community and Economic Development Director. Um just very quickly, this uh street right of ways in the C three zoning district east of Oregon, that's our heaviest commercial zoning district. Um the proposal will vacate street right of way that has previously been determined to be unnecessary for. Utilities and transportation through the Oregon Street and Circulation Plan that was uh done approximately twenty years ago. The uh proposed vacation also clears up a legal description error that resulted from council approval of a twenty nineteen vacation for this. Uh same segment of right of way, except it was it was adjacent and to the west. And uh staff has analyzed this uh proposal in uh all applicable departments. And no adverse uh effects from this vacation are anticipated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister White. Does council have any questions of staff before I open up the public hearing? If not, uh does anyone else wish to speak to this item? Uh, does anyone, uh well, here, I'll open up the public hearing. And I do not have anybody who is uh. Called in that say they wanted to be a part of this, but I will go through the motion for a first call. A second call. And a third, a final call for a public comment regarding uh this topic. So if not, I'm gonna close the, I'm gonna close the public hearing and now I will ask for a motion from our Mayor Pro Tem Barajas.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance number four, four, nine, eight. Vacating East Duluth Street from the centerline of previously vacated Colorado Street. To the west right of way line of Utah Avenue and further authorize publication by summary only.
Okay, there's been a motion to adopt ordinance number four, four, nine, eight. Do I hear a second?
Yeah, this is Councilman Milne. I'll second that.
Mister Milne, uh with a second on this motion. So all those in favor of adopting ordinance number four, four, nine, eight, signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, same sign? Passed unanimously. Thank you for that, council. And next, we'll move on to item number eight, ordinances and resolutions not relating to hearings. And the first item on this section is resolution amendment to the interlocal agreement with Mid Columbia Library. Uh Mister Radke, do you have anything you'd like to share and report?
Yes, thank you, Mister Mayor. Just to piggyback on last week's workshop presentation, this is a one-year extension to our existing ten-year contract. Which sunsets on December thirty first of this year. Due to pandemic restrictions and obviously subsequent staff uh resources being allocated elsewhere to the operations of both the city and the library. Both parties were not able to negotiate a new agreement uh to continue on. Um so therefore, this resolution is requesting the approval of an amendment to extend the current agreement one, an additional year. Um to add to some of the uh additional information that was requested last week. Regionally, the Mid Columbia Library District is the main provider of the service in both Benton and Franklin Counties. Um, city of Kennewick is served by one branch of the Mid Columbia Libraries, whereas Pasco is served by two. It also reaches in other rural communities in both counties. The city of Richland runs their own library facility. It is a city department. With city employees staffed in there. Um funding for the library services in the region is comparable to Pasco's for the urbanized civic areas here. Uh with the exception of Richland, spending a little bit more due to their um having it as a a department and a facility specifically for the city. And therefore having additional costs associated with library staffing, supplies, programs, liabilities, uh that sort of thing. So due to the additional time needed to negotiate a new agreement, um city of Pasco in the coming year. Uh will be working with Mid Columbia Libraries to bring something forth to the city council. And uh willing and able to entertain any ideas or alternatives proposed in the meantime. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mister Radke. Appreciate the report. Uh so anybody from the council have any questions or comments before we uh entertain a motion for this item?
This is Councilmember Roach, and I just wanted to know for Mister Radke if it's possible to just do a cost study. To see whether it would be more cost effective for city of Pasco to run their own. Library like Richland does, or if it would be more so expensive than uh to run their own.
Certainly, we can prepare that information and um I probably the timing would be the beginning of next year. We can. Uh certainly bring that back as we negotiate a new agreement.
Thank you.
This is Councilmember Alvarado. Just a quick question about the two libraries we do have in Pasco. Um you may have mentioned this uh uh um last week, but I can't remember. Um the actual facilities, are those owned by uh Mid Columbia Libraries, are they leased, or are they owned by the city?
Uh, yes, the main facility that's located adjacent to Memorial Park is owned by the city of Pasco. The West Pasco facility that Mid Columbia Library leases is privately held. Um and they lease it and that's the facility um on Wrigley Drive. So we do own one building and Mid Columbia Library leases both facilities.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. Anyone else? With that, um if there's no other questions or comments by the council, uh Mayor Pro Tem Baras, would you like to entertain a motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve resolution number three, nine, nine, six. Amending the interlocal cooperation agreement between city of Pasco and Mid Columbia Libraries. And authorize the city manager to execute the amendment.
Thank you.
Roach, and I'll second it.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve resolution three, nine, nine, six and it's seconded by Councilwoman Roach. Um all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Oppose, same sign? It passes unanimously. Looking forward to working another week with the Mid Columbia and uh and the CEO Kyle Cox. Thank you, Mister Radke. Alright, with that, we'll move right along to the next item and that would be resolutions. Uh CPA two thousand twenty dash zero, zero, one, urban growth area expansion of comprehensive plan update. And would, um is it Mister Gonzalez, who would like to? Uh get us up to date or have any comments on that, on this item? Or Mister White?
Well, uh thank you, Mister Mayor, and and just briefly, uh Mister Gonzalez, who has spearheaded this effort. Through its uh well, since for two years now, um will be providing counsel with a very short narrative. Just reminding counsel where we were from the previous workshop in September and the path forward for this uh these two issues.
Okay, thank you, Mister White. Go ahead, Mister Gonzalez.
Uh thank you. Uh good evening, Mayor, uh members of council. Um as Director Rick White, I mentioned staff's excited after a long and arduous process. To share two resolutions for your consideration uh this evening. Um the the growth that Pasco has experienced and is projected to continue well into the future, the comprehensive plan. And the urban growth area will need to accommodate an additional forty eight thousand residents within their timeframes. That's a a few figures that we may become used to. However, we must be attentive to the fact that by the year twenty fifty, our region will be home to approximately four hundred and fifty thousand people. The planning we are doing today must be adaptive for a city home to a hundred and fifty thousand people. The the delineation of the expanded urban growth area which covers uh slightly more than thirty four hundred acres is a significant request. It's likely one of the larger requests made by any jurisdiction. It's important to understand why such an area is necessary. And also why we believe we are justified uh in making the request itself. Um the expansion represents, I I think lessons learned in planning and growth management practices, specifically that urban growth areas should be reserved. Shall be reserved for urban levels of growth and density. The more we manage our growth, the more we can successfully preserve the agricultural and open space lands along with our rural surroundings. We believe that the comprehensive plan prepared by staff and our consulting team identify a pragmatic set of strategies to manage that growth for the city of Pasco. With that, the city anticipates to accommodate approximately sixty three percent of our future growth within the existing urban growth area. The twenty eighteen thirty eight comprehensive plan was able to utilize a significant community outreach with the help of various organizations and agencies. Uh to produce uh sort of a strategic growth plan for the city. This will require ongoing efforts to update our municipal zoning code, design standards and development regulations to ensure that Pasco remains compliant. With the Growth Management Act. Um staff's aware that unfortunately, the urban growth area expansion and the comprehensive plan will not please every member of our community. Property owner or stakeholder. Staff is uh also aware that there is ongoing concern and remaining questions about the process and the recommendations. Um however, as discussed and confirmed with the planning commission, staff does not consider the questions we receive to warrant a change. Uh to what's before you tonight, rather, um in addition to those comments and questions, staff, per council approval. Uh will be tasked with working under a new comprehensive plan to begin to implement the thirteen planning goals of the Growth Management Act. And a series of resolutions, ordinances, policies and plans adopted by the Pasco City Council over the past few years. Uh this plan will also require continued. Uh continued uh and increased consultation with state agencies such as the Department of Commerce. such as the Department of Commerce, the Store of Preservation, Natural Resources, and the Department of Transportation. This is also going to include, uh, the Aviation Division of Washtau and the Port of Pasco to ensure that airport operations are not hindered by nearby growth, uh, ongoing communications with the Confederated Tribes of the Kovo Reservation, and continued collaboration with our local agencies such as Ben Franklin Transit, the Benton Franklin Council of Governments, and the Benton Franklin Health District. All are very important to the success of this plan. Lastly, creating and developing a coordinated growth management approach with our partners at Franklin County will be vital to ensure that both the county and the city are abiding by the countywide planning policies established in twenty nineteen. Staff looks forward to working within our departments here at the city, engaging the public, meeting the goals of the council as we plan for new parks, an efficient transportation system, jobs, housing, preservation, and public facilities that our community members depend on. Um, that's all we have for you today. With that, I think, uh, either myself or Director Rick White would be happy to, uh, address or a- answer any questions. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that, Mr. Gonzalez, and I, I realize that there's been a lot of work gone into this and appreciate all the efforts that, uh, yourself and Mr. White, uh, have done to, uh, to get this, uh, moving forward. Uh, I do have notes here that we do have members that, um, are listening in that would like to comment. And if you are on, Mr. Robert Carosino, are you on the line tonight?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Good evening.
Good, good evening, Mayor, and good evening, uh, council members. Uh, thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk to you for a second. Um, I'm commenting on the city's proposed, uh, update of the comprehensive plan and expansion of their bo- growth boundaries. I believe the, uh, proposed ordinance should not be adopted today. I believe that the, uh, environmental analysis that was produced is not an adequate document, in my opinion, for which, upon which you can make a decision. In the few minutes I have been given, I can't completely discuss all the problems with the EIS and the preferred alternatives and other alternatives that were analyzed, but I have included substantial detail on several of these problems in my comments on the draft EIS. I submitted my comments on July thirty-first, twenty twenty. I've asked the city clerk to provide each of you with a copy of those comments. My complete comments are not included in the final EIS. There is only a very short summarization of some of my comments that's included in the final document. Rather, it's in a separate exhibit, uh, exhibit, which you folks would not normally see. I think that if you read my comment letter in detail, you will see that I made some very cogent arguments for the recommendations that I included for additional information and analysis that should be included in the final EIS. I, if you choose to adopt the ordinance based upon the, uh, analysis in the, uh, EIS, um, I fear that future generations of Pasco citizens will be asking themselves, who were these people on the city council that made such a poor decision? Why didn't they do a better job? They've left us with a Northwest Pasco area that has horrendous traffic conditions, a lack of waterfront parks, and made Northwest Pasco a second-rate city compared to Richland and Kennewick. And I really think this is the opportunity for the City of Pasco to reinvent itself and make itself the premier city within the tri-cities, not, not the second-rate city. To quickly summarize, some of the major issues I found, there's a failure to adequately consider uh, the terrible traffic impacts that will be, uh, created upon Road sixty-eight and Road one hundred at their intersections with I one eighty-two, which is the primary means of transportation between uh, West Pasco and other parts of the tri-cities. Um, even the State Department of Transportation commented in scoping comments that just with the expansion that will occur when you utilize the existing urban growth boundary that you have and, and build up the Broadmoor area, that the, uh, intersection of Road one hundred will be beyond capacity. So expanding to the north of Road one hundred as far as you have gone is going to create far more residents than the roadways will be able to handle. It's great to have dreams of, of modifying those roadways in the future, but major intersection changes just don't happen that much. Your transportation studies show those to be like thirty-two million dollar proposals. The citizens of future Pasco will be the ones that will suffer as later city councils say, well, the decision was made twenty years ago, and we can't help it if the state won't provide the money to upgrade those interchanges at Road sixty-eight and Road one hundred. Um, I propose that you consider additional alternatives that would limit the scope of the northward expansion and cause the, uh, urban growth boundary, uh, expansion to still expand, but end at the southern side of the Dent-Clark Extension Road, if you're going from east to west, rather than going further north into the farmlands of the Pasco area. That would reduce the number of households that would be, uh, located in this area and decrease the amount of traffic that these inadequate roadways will have to handle. I know it's not your fault that we only have two intersections, but comprehensive planning requires you to look at what you have and reasonably, uh, and appropriately discuss the impacts of what you're proposing to do, and that's not done currently. Similarly, uh, there's a failure to adequately analyze, uh, discuss, and evaluate the needs of the future community for additional parklands in the current urban growth area north of I one eighty-two and the expanded urban growth area that you propose to, um, include. Um, people in that area will be looking across the river to the City of Richland. They will see three fairly large city parks. Um, and they will not have any city park along the Columbia River in the whole section from I one eighty-two, uh, to the, uh, northward expansion of the urban growth boundary that is proposed. Having in the area forty to fifty thousand more people, creating essentially another tri-cities town in this area and not planning for a large urban city park along the river that will have amenities similar to what's available in Richland and Kennewick, boat launch ramps, uh, swimming areas, grassy picnicking areas, access to parks. It's just, it, it's, it's just kind of stunning to think that we would not plan for that in a comprehensive plan. Now, I'm seventy years old. None of these ideas are things that are gonna benefit me personally, but I do want Franklin County and the City of Pasco to become the premier city in the tri-cities and not just the bedroom community, where people will live here and go to work somewhere else and not have the quality of a life and amenities that could have if you were to reduce the expansion in the northwest Pasco area and look at some other alternatives. Uh, again, I'm not saying don't expand. Go ahead and expand a fair amount, all the way out to Dent Road-Clark Road, but when you go further, you're just having too many future people in that area that will, will be beyond the capacity of your, of your roadways to support. And even for your existing urban growth area and for an expansion even to Dent Road, you should be planning right now, and the comprehensive plan EIS should discuss the need for a, uh, city-size or a large urban park along the river. There are only a few areas that are left where that kind of thing can be built. And once the farms that are currently in those areas are turned into residential development, you will not have the opportunity to, uh, to, to build those things in the future. And, and as I say, everyone that lives in northwest Pasco will be able to look across the river and they'll see all those fine parks in the City of Richland, uh, walking and biking paths all the way along the river north of, um, I one eighty-two, and we won't have those here in the City of Pasco. The areas that are shown in the, in the maps and the EIS along the river are primarily, uh, a core of engineers, uh, wildlife habitat areas. And, you know, it's fine that the EIS has them in green, makes them look like parks, but those aren't the kind of parks that your citizens are gonna be looking for in the next ten to twenty years. Yes, it's possible they may be allowed to hike in there, but they're certainly not a, uh, comparable s- city waterfront park that has the ability for swimming areas, picnicking, boat launch ramps. Thirty, forty thousand more people, there's gonna be a heck of a lot of people that will be wanting to take a boat out and, and get it into the Columbia River. They're gonna have to fight all the kind of traffic that they'll be faced because of the lack of, uh, road capacity in this area. They won't be able to get down to the, uh, south Pasco area as easily as you might think ten to twenty years from now. Um, and it's just not reasonable to propose an expansion of the size that you propose without making the proposal now for parks. You don't have to choose the individual location. I understand that landlords sometimes get nervous about that. But the purpose of an EIS is to discuss needs and alternatives how to fill those needs, and it really doesn't discuss filling the need for a riverfront park. I, I could discuss much further and additional, um, comments are included in my, uh, comment letter, which I hope the city clerk has provided to all of you, and I encourage you to read it, but, uh, in order to keep it short, I think I'll limit my comments to this, at this long time.
All right, well, thank you for, uh, your concerns and your comments, Mr. Carosino. We'll, uh, we'll definitely take that into consideration. Uh, Mr. Mark Fi- Fi-
Fickers.
Fix?
Fickers.
Fickers. Mr. Mark Fickers, are you on the line tonight?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Mark Fickers, pronounced Fickers. I'm a real estate and land use attorney in Yakima. And, uh, it's been a while since I've been in front of this body, but I've been in front of this body before, and we're here to speak, uh, on a couple of matters, couple separate matters relating to your planning staff's proposed resolution. Um, I don't know if there's any particular order. I represent Big Sky Developers, which is a local real estate development, um, company that's done a lot of residential development in North Pasco. Uh, I also represent one property owner, Fred, uh, Fred Oberding, and Deborah Kohler. And, um, you know, again, I wanna, I, if there's any particular order which you wanna handle the matters, I'd like to s- keep them separately, but I'm here to request two relatively minor modifications to Jacob Gonzalez's proposed resolution. And the resolute, uh, the two minor modifications are real simple. I'm going to be asking you to include what I'll refer to as the Kohler property, uh, that's, uh, in the northwest corner that was originally included within the proposed UGA. Um, and I'm also gonna be asking that a commercial designation, uh, be removed from the Oberding property. Um, and I think that can be done. This city council has the authority to do that. Uh, yeah, I think Mr. Gonzalez has accurately outlined some of the background, but this is a long two-year process where Mr. Gonzalez, together with a consultant, make recommendations to the Planning Commission, who makes recommendations to you, uh, the city council, who ultimately re- makes recommendations to Franklin County, uh, who has the ultimate decision-making authority on where your UJGA is. And, and real simply, y- your, your UGA is just where you expect urban level development in the next twenty years. Where I'm telling you, my client's two pieces of property, both the Oberding property and the Kohler property, is ready for urban level development, not na- right now, not twenty years from now. Um, so I think I'll start with, real quick, on the, uh, Kohler property, and um, again, Mr. Gonzalez, or Mr. Caleb Stromstad will speak after me. He's our client's engineer. And I don't know, did, did the council members, were you provided copies of, of maps from, uh, Mr. Stromstad? Do you have any of those provided?
Yes, we, we have them, uh, we were, they were provided to us by the clerk.
Okay, tha- thank you. Uh, I apologize. I can't see everybody. I can't see the maps in the hearing room. I assume I'm just on speaker and you can't see me. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Well, the Kohler property, you can see on one of the maps provided by Mr. Stromstad, is in the northwest corner of the proposed UGA. Um, and, and as you can see, for some reason, it was just left, it was in the original alternative two that was included in the city's detailed environmental analysis, and it got excluded. It was basically a casualty of the city's desire to go with a more compact growth model, uh, which Mr. Gonzalez has, has outlined to both the Planning Commission and this council. We simply ask it be re-included. Um, if you look at the map, you can see, you know, this is property just north of Extended Dent Road. You can see there's already a dense residential development south of the property, and there's also a residential development north of the property that's in the county. This property is going to be developed for, for urban level development. The question is, should it be using, developed, using city standards or in the county? And, and, uh, our position is it should be included within the county. Again, real simply, we participated in every step of the process. There's letters, uh, that we provided to the Planning Commission, to Mr. White's office, to Mr. Gonzalez, and to this council. Uh, the original letter was dated May twentieth, twenty twenty, and I tried to provide a copy to you late now. And I apologize that, that, uh, my letter got to the council late, but we were expecting it to be part of the record. In fact, similar to your last participant's comments, um, you know, our comments are summarized in the EIS, draft EIS comments, but they weren't provided. Um, it's, it's on behalf of, uh, Deborah Kohler. This is a question where the property, um, is not suitable for farming anymore. The owner wants out of farming. Half of the properties, even zone for property, half of it's not. Um, it's right next to existing development, and as Mr. Stromstad's gonna testify after me, with a simple sewer and water extension, this provides and facilitates additional development and property you already have included in the urban growth area. If you look at Mr. Stromstad's map, he's got an area in green that says immediately benefiting properties. Our sewer and water extensions would benefit the property in the green and ultimately the property in orange, um, which could, and under the GME, I'm not gonna bore you and go through GMA goals or law, but it's real simple. Urban level development should occur where it's already occurring and where the facilities are adequate. The Kohler property already has urban level development all around it, and with a sewer and water extension, it would be easy to accomplish. In fact, it protects your river because instead of developing the property with onsite septic systems on, in the county, we would have sewer and water who'd protect, protect the hydrologic continuity with the river and be much more beneficial from an environmental standpoint. So, uh, with, um, I, again, and, and one final comment is my understanding is the county has already made a couple of small changes to its urban growth area. Again, it's taken, it's taken a hundred and forty acres out and added forty acres in. So with the Kohler property included, there would really be no net increase in Mr. Gonzalez's proposed UGA expansion. Um, I, uh, a- and by the way, the county's compact growth model was designed to accommodate uh, some comments from both citizens, although, and from environmental groups wishing to have more dense development and not to expand the property into agricultural, or the UGA into agricultural lands of long-term commercial significance. So, w- with that in mind, uh, a- again, my, the, the Kohler UGA would be on matter number twenty, twenty, zero, one, and we ask the council move, we have no problem approving the UGA boundary, but including the Kohler property within the proposed preferred UGA. And that is totally within the council's, uh, control to do tonight. We don't wanna hold the city up. This has been a two-year process, and we understand, uh, you have relatively tight timelines. Um, I, I, I think to just keep matters going rather than to go back, unless the council has any questions for me on the Kohler addition, I could go ahead and make my comments on the Oberding property as well, which is a different issue. Is, are there any questions relating to my request to include the Kohler property within the city's preferred UGA?
Any questions from council?
I have a question just for the, for clerk or staff. Are we gonna be getting these, uh, these comments that both, uh, individuals said that they've submitted?
Are you gonna, wh- what do you mean, councilman Rocha? Are you gonna get them how?
Email or however, but just to review that they've said that they submitted, uh, the first gentleman said he submitted some comments to the clerk and then, uh,
They're in our memorandum. So they should be in, um, in your agenda notes. That's a separate item.
They're in our agenda?
That's correct. And it's a third item on our agenda, uh, for, uh, for the week, but they were added, I think, uh, today.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, Mr. Fickers, so was that, was there, was there more that you were gonna add?
I, I don't have any additional comments on the inclusion of the Kohler property. Uh, I do, Mr. Stromstad is going to speak on the Kohler property. But I can go ahead right now and, and, uh, do you wanna finish discussions on the Kohler property before moving to the Oberding designation? That's on item number two, C P A twenty twenty oh two, which is related. That has to do with what the properties are going to be designated within the urban growth area. Uh, I, I, I guess I'm asking Rick or Jacob, how do you wanna handle this? Uh, I can finish my comments on that and move to Caleb or, or finish the Kohler discussion. I'd probably like to finish the discussion on the Kohler property before moving on.
Well, why don't, why don't you go ahead and just try to be as brief as possible?
All right, I, all right. I know everybody's getting tired. All right, switching my other small modification to, this would be item number twenty twenty dash oh two, is on the land use element of your comprehensive plan. And if you look at the additional maps that we submitted today, again, provided by Caleb Stromstad from Actara Engineering, this has to do with my client, Big Sky Developers, is under contract with Fred Oberding to ac- to acquire and develop property right next to the property purchased by the Pasco School District. It's right north of Burns Road. And bottom line is, originally, the city staff had proposed the front thirty acres to be zoned commercial. We believe the commercial designation is inappropriate. We have consistently provided that, our position to both planning staff and the planning, uh, commission. Um, planning staff made a minor modification to reduce the commercial designation of fifteen acres, but we still believe it doesn't work. And on this record, the property owner Fred Oberding doesn't think we need commercial property in the middle of a residential area. The property developer doesn't want it. It interferes with the growth. There's no market for it. A guy named George Doc Stetter, who is a Realtor, testified at the Planning Commission hearing. And the neighbors in school district don't want it. The only person that seems to want commercial designated property is Mr. Gonzalez. And, and I don't think it should be, uh, I think this, the council should consider making a minor modification. We'll accept the proposed designation of medium-density residential on the top forty acres. The rest of it's zoned low-density or, or designated low-density residential. But commercial designation would kill the development and is inappropriate for this area. It's also inappropriate for this area because Burns Road doesn't even connect. There's no commercial traffic corridor to distribute commercial traffic from this area. The city doesn't have the right of way. If you go west on Burns Road, you can't even get to Road sixty-eight, which is the city's main commercial corridor. So with, with that in mind, um, both the property owner and developer, and Mr. Stromstad will go over it. But we're asking the city to remove, to amend this motion to approve the comprehensive aman- approve the comprehensive plan amendments recommended by staff with the deletion of the fifteen acres of commercial designation on the Oberding property, which would simply, you know, make it difficult or impossible to develop for residential use. Um, so with that in mind, I will turn it over to Mr. Caleb Stromstad, who'll provide some engineering, uh, and technical support for that opinion. And again, this is something the council has the power to do. You do not have to be a rubber stamp for what Mr. Gonzalez has requested.
Thank you, Mr. Fickers. Uh, Mr. Stromstad, you wanna take it from here?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Uh, members of the council, can you hear me?
Yes. Good evening.
Um, I'll, 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 good evening. I'll, I'll piggyback off what Mr. Fickers left off on the Oberding land use. Um, just wanna make sure everybody's oriented. If the council could look at, um, what we've titled Exhibit One. It's a copy of the land use map. Does everybody have that in front of them?
Well, they're kind, they're in the di- for me, they're in different places, but, uh, but I can get them here real quick.
Is there a way to put it up on the shared screen?
I don't know if that's possible, uh, Mr. Racket.
Perhaps, perhaps maybe just the land use map. Um, that would be a good way, because it's important just to see the orientation, um, without really much reference. Mr. Mayor, is that a reasonable request or should, should I keep on talking?
Go ahead and, go ahead and keep talking while Mr. Racket tries to find that map.
Okay, thank you. Um, so the Oberding property, i- if you're familiar with, uh, Road sixty-eight area, if you drive north on Road sixty-eight, there's a half circle of agriculture. It's where, right where the new S T C U credit union is. So keep going north of that, there's Burns Road. If you go to the left, you can, if you head north, you can take a left on Burns Road. If you try to take a right, you run into private property. There's a half a mile gap of private property, um, to connect Burns Road um, with this commercial property designation. Uh, pretty simple. Commercial property requires a high amount of traffic, um, in order to justify its development. Um, there is no way that this property will get the traffic necessary to justify fifteen acres of commercial land use designation. So we've, we've proposed, um, uh, an acceptable measure that this land use designation be changed to mixed residential commercial. And in that table that I provided, it's a copy of the city's land use designations and the criteria. And the mixed residential commercial allows for a number of residential zoning, and it also allows for light commercial, which is what the city staff has said they would allow next to the school. Um, so for flexibility development, a mixed residential commercial land use designation just makes sense right here. And it's a very, um, it's a very minor modification that wouldn't disrupt any timing. And the city council has the ability to make that change right now. And we've asked, and they would thoughtfully consider and ask thoughtful questions with city staff as, as well as myself or Mr. Fickers, um, to, to get better clarity of this, because we, we, we sent these exhibits on Thursday, and we asked that they would be, um, sent to city staff's review. Apparently, it got lost in the shuffle. Um, but the exhibits pretty much speak for themselves. And if you look at the area, um, you'll be able to see that, um, most of the commercial designation in the city is butted up with a mixed residential, and then it goes into low-density. This is the only place I could find in the city where there's a random red commercial blob in the, in the sea of residential. And without any future transportation draw, it's not on a major, it's Burns Road is a major, um, arterial or principal arterial. But a- aside from going to the school property east, there's no drive to draw commercial traffic. And so, again, a mixed residential, commercial land use designation is appropriate. And we would ask the city council to, to consider making that revision tonight and continue, uh, approving the resolution with that small amendment and be happy to speak to anything, um, specifically, we're just, it's a, we're, we're in disagreement with city staff right now, it's obvious. And so we're asking for a, for an objective viewpoint right now, and that's, hopefully, we get your ear on that. Um, so I'd be happy to answer questions on the Oberding property. Um, um, but I will continue now into the Kohler property. So the, the Kohler U G A is a really unique one. Um, again, if you get the land use map, you'll see on the, the northwest corner of the city, would be, would be the left corner of that land use map. There's just like a little earmark pie shape where the U G A goes away from the Columbia River and then cuts back up north again. That's the property that we're talking about to be included in the U G A. It was originally included in the, uh, original alternative two. And, um, alternative three, which was presented to you, uh, tonight, um, just a little bit of history. That, this, uh, the alternative three with significant changes, it significantly reduced the area of the expansion, and it changed a lot of the land use. That alternative three was, um, was prepared behind closed doors without input from the public. And since it's released, uh, for comment, there's been real heavy resistance from city staff to make any modifications. So again, that's why we're here. Um, we believe that include, including the Kohler, uh, property in the U G A is a, is a net win for everybody. It opens up, like Mr. Fickers said, I prepared an exhibit labeled Exhibit Two that shows the areas that would immediately benefit from ci- extending city sewer and water. Um, this development specifically would, would extend over a mile of city sewer. That's incredibly significant. That's not a cost to the city, that's a development cost. The developer will pay to get this property, um, ready for city development. Um, so that four hundred acres immediately gets city sewer and water. That's eight hundred to two thousand homes, um, ready to go now. Um, that's pretty significant. And we're pretty excited to present this proposal to city staff. And w- w- we didn't get the reception that we wanted, obviously. Um, and again, it's, it's simply because there's, there's just been such a resistance to change this document. We're two years behind schedule. Let's just get it done. But at this time, you can't extend city sewer beyond the U G A. And so the Kohler property will be developed. It's an infill property. There's residential development to the north and south. And so if the city council does not move to include this, then the, one of the goals to discourage development on septic will not be met, because that would be the only, um, the only way to utilize this property is development under septic, because we can't get it in the U G A. Um, interestingly enough, if you do have the exhibits, I, I prepared another one called Exhibit Three. But Exhibit Three, pardon me, is a, uh, snapshot of the agenda from the August twentieth Planning Commission meeting. And it shows the summary of revisions for the urban growth boundary. Um, so the city proposed Alternative Three. Public comment happened. They made some changes. Forty acres were added. Um, and a hundred and forty were removed. We're proposing to add a hundred, which ironically is a net zero change. Um, and so the, the argument that this will compromise the integrity with growth management planning um, is simply a matter of opinion. It's not true. Um, this land can be added tonight. The resolution can be passed. And, um, the county even commented it when the county reviewed, uh, the new boundary with the draft D I S. They specifically commented on the Kohler property that it was excluded, um, noting that it was included in the original U G A, and it was also included as a, a city's, uh, comprehen- uh, sewer com- comprehensive plan. Um, the city's response, city staff's response to that comment was, that was the old sewer comp plan. The new one didn't include it. Therefore, we're not gonna include it in the U G A. While that's true, that it wasn't included in the new sewer comprehensive plan, those comprehensive plans or utility plans are built on assumptions of land use. They're constantly updated. There's plenty of latitude to include this property. Again, it's a matter of preference. We don't wanna make changes. The council, you have the opportunity to make those changes tonight. Be happy to answer more specific questions. We understand that you're kinda being caught off guard on this. We've been working on this for two years and have gotten absolutely nowhere with city staff. So we're asking you to take an objective look at our request and, and ask appropriate questions, because this is, this is significant. Um, again, we've been going at it for several years, and these considerations are worthy of, of further discussion. And we'll stay on the line and, uh, let other people talk. But thank you for the opportunity. Good night.
All right. Well, thank you for that, Mr. Stromstad. And now, uh, that's all I have for folks that, uh, called in that said they wanted to, uh, to provide some input. Uh, staff, h- how do you see this? How, where do you wanna go from here? I'm not sta- well, uh, that was for staff and/or the, the council. How, how would you like, you have any questions or how would you like to move forward from here? I, it sounds to me that there's some more work to get done, but how long, what kind of timeline are we on, Mr. Zabel? Or Mr. White?
Um, well, Mr. Mayor, I, I can address several of the comments as well as, uh, Mr. Gonzalez. Um, the timeframe is critical, because what we hope to do is get this plan fully adopted prior to the end of the state biennium, so we don't jeopardize any funding that we are in line for, for, uh, park improvements and/or transportation grants. So, uh, timing is very critical. And, uh, I'm very nervous about an appeal for starters, uh, which will draw this out. And, um, if it gets drawn out too much further, we're going to be out of compliance when the budget at the state level is adopted. Would you like me to address several other comments related to the Kohler property inclusion and the Oberding property land use change?
I, I think that, Rick, if I could jump in?
Yeah, go ahead, Mr..
So I, I, I wanna make a couple of comments, and I, I think it is worthwhile to have Rick talk about, uh, some of the specific items we heard tonight. But before we, before we get to that, I, I, I would just kinda remind everyone here that we're mandated under, mandated under state G M A to plan for approximately fifty thousand people over the next twenty years. And, uh, while this wasn't a public hearing tonight, uh, we heard quite a bit of input uh, at the end of, uh, what's been a probably more than two-year process at this point. Uh, much of this input is already provided to the Planning Commission, was considered by them, and the development of their recommendation through the public hearing process. So this is not a public hearing tonight. It's, it's, uh, I, I think part of council's transparency, where council's gonna take public input on agenda items, uh, right up to the time they decide them, and this, uh, this one being no exception. Uh, as you know, and I think some of you know firsthand, uh, from your own experience as, uh, planning commission members, uh, there's been considerable opportunity for the public to provide input to the planning commission uh, over this two-year journey through the planning commission, or excuse me, through the comp plan update. Uh, and they've been working very hard, I think, on this issue to, to put their recommendation together for you. The inter- information that the planning commission, uh, any information that came tonight that the planning commission had not previously heard, uh, would be information that came to your attention, or that's come to the attention of the city the first time tonight, well outside the public hearing process, uh, the E I S process. So, you know, if, I, I don't know if, w- I, I have not followed it closely enough to tell you that, that things brought up tonight were not heard by the planning commission. If they were, uh, they should have been appropriately brought up to the planning commission first. If they were brought up to the planning commission and they're not included in this recommendation, that means the planning commission didn't put them in their recommendation. And that's what we have a planning commission for. Um, Mr. Gonzalez mentioned that it's difficult, uh, to develop a twenty-year plan for the city to accommodate, uh, a number of people representing essentially seventy-five percent of our current population. That's how much fifty is of seventy-five, you know? It's, it's a, it's a huge, uh, addition to our city over the next twenty years. And, uh, we've had a lot of conversation about this, even at the council level, including the preferred more compact option, uh, including, uh, issues like were, was brought up regarding, uh, mixing, uh, some commercial into different areas, uh, in the expanded U G A. Uh, in part to limit number of trips that need to run to grocery stores and things like that. And, and I remember, Mayor, you, you having, uh, an opinion about it, and other council members having another opinion about it. And that's, that's kinda how democracy and how this process works, is people have an opportunity to, to, uh, raise concerns that, uh, you know, about a particular, uh, proposal or piece of a proposal, and then other people have the ability to disagree. And in the end, the majority's gonna decide, this is how this happens. But, uh, that is not a staff-driven, you know, the commercial within the, within the, uh, residential zone is not a staff-driven thing. That's a, that's a planning, uh, principle, uh, that's been discussed in this chambers, uh, both by the planning commission and, uh, by the city council. And, uh, you know, staff's a vehicle to get these things done. Uh, I, I think it's fair to characterize this being, uh, a city staff versus the public issue. Uh, the city staff may disagree with the decision of, uh, or excuse me, an opinion of a member of the public on la- a land use issue, or whether or not a property ought to be included in a urban growth boundary or not. But, uh, this is a recommendation of the planning commission after hearing staff, after hearing the public. But uh, this is a recommendation of the Planning Commission after hearing staff, after hearing the public, after reviewing the environmental documents, the analysis of all the different subject matter experts, the hundreds of pages of information that you have in front of you. And uh, to characterize that is staff's being stubborn, I think, is unfair to the staff that's been working, I think, really hard on this particular issue. And I'll also note, um, you know, there there's a lot of uh items that uh you don't you don't answer every question in the comp plan update, you know, that we had. We had some discussion about uh infrastructure and how that's going to happen. And if you look at your transportation element, it talks a little bit about uh where funding may may or may not come from. This is this is a twenty-year plan. And if you look back over the the last twenty years and where this council has spent money, and granted, the numbers are smaller uh because the index of costs are different twenty years ago than they are twenty years from now. So the there's going to be a scale and a difference in numbers and the population is far bigger today and will be twenty years from now than it was twenty years ago. So, yeah, while the numbers are different in terms of magnitude, in terms of magnitude compared to the time adjusted for inflation and the population, I think you'd find that you you've made a lot of investment. The city, city of Pasco has made a lot of investment over the twenty years that rival the numbers you're seeing in this particular document. So those things do happen because staff and councils and the public and the development community, they work on that all the time this is being developed. I think one of the advantages we have this time is I, this is this is, in my opinion, uh, from your previous effort and from the effort before uh, the the two previous uh land use updates, you have a lot more technical analysis in this. And I think we're able to foresee a lot more things coming than what you could have possibly under, what past councils could have possibly under uh those prior plans. It's, you know, and any plans is good as carrying it out. So the next challenge is going to be carrying whatever the council approves out. So with that, I think Rick probably is much better, Rick or Jacob are in much better position than I am to speak specifically to some of the items that are brought up. But I do want did want to share with council that I uh, I don't think staff has been keeping secrets or being particularly belligerent with the public. Uh, staff's been doing their job as professionals. And uh, that information's been getting to the Planning Commission. And again, this is the Planning Commission uh recommendation, not the staff's recommendation. So with that.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel. Uh, Mr. White, can you briefly just go over those real quick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly appreciate Mr. Zabel's comments. But in regards to the Kohler property, this is a hundred and four acres uh that's in the very northwest portion of the uh of the map that you you've seen already. I did want to point out that property to the north that was referenced by Mr. Fickers is is developed at far less than what minimum urban density would be uh considered. Uh, through various hearings and decisions by the Washington State Growth Management Hearing Board, the minimum urban density is approximately four units an acre. The property to the north of the Kohler property is less than two units an acre. And the property that's designated to the south is a little more than two units per acre. The developer that Mr. Fickers referenced for the Kohler property has gone on record in writing stating that he plans to develop two units per acre. Completely inappropriate for our urban area. It it simply makes uh transit service impossible. It increases congestion on the roads and it certainly uh will uh is not justified from a standpoint of accommodating future population growth. Uh, the uh orbiting property designation, uh, I heard a reference to right-of-way being missing on Burns Road. But that's going to be missing whether it's developed as a commercial property or residential property. The land use designation has no bearing on the existence or non-existence of right-of-way. Commercial lands are necessary next to population and public facilities like the Pasco uh uh school district that has purchased property adjacent this designation. Um, it provides for not only jobs that people do not have to get on the interstate for, but also services to reduce vehicle miles traveled and vehicle hours traveled. And so um, I would uh encourage um council to keep in mind that these were um goals of the city that were addressed particularly through the Somos Pasco effort and various uh surveys that have been taken since then and comments that you hear all the time. Uh, both of these, uh, both the Kohler property inclusion and the um orbiting property land use change, of course, were brought up with the Planning Commission and were considered several times by them. Uh, hence the uh Planning Commission and Mr. Zabel's explanation of their recommendation to city council.
Thank you, Mr. White. Well, uh, council, any uh, any comments or and opinions? Which way would you like to go on this?
This is Councilmember Alvarado.
Yes, Councilmember Alvarado.
Uh, I do want to thank uh the two-year process of uh uh working through this and certainly is a a behemoth of a of a um of a process to um look at how we're going to grow and accommodate uh such a large uh number of folks who want to be part of us, want to be part of our city. So I commend the Planning Commission staff and everyone who's been involved in uh, you know, developing our 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 city uh past and in future. Um, I I my question I had was um, having to do, I think, perhaps a little bit with the first comment and as it pertains to public lands, I uh uh perhaps, I don't know if uh, uh, public parks, but perhaps, I don't know, someone could speak to that. I think that was a little bit uh confusing to me, I think, perhaps on my understanding of uh kind of the use of the of the western part of um the shoreline.
Would that be?
Yeah, so perhaps.
Mr. White?
Or Mr. White?
Well, I'll give it a I'll give it a shot, uh, Mr. Mayor. And Mr. Gonzalez, please uh weigh in if you if you feel the need to. Um, no, and Mr. Carrisino is right. Specific properties have not been chosen for development of parks. Waterfront properties in particular, as you as you'll note from what's existing in the city of Pasco already, are owned by the Corps of Engineers, um, along with properties in both Kennewick and Richland. Uh, it is difficult for me to find, although there is a ten-acre site owned by the Corps of Engineers uh a little bit north of the Broadmoor area. It's hard for me to come up with uh a location that wouldn't be in conflict with existing residential development or terrain or the way that the river is uh configured in that area. If council recalls, the Columbia River is very, very shallow um from roughly uh Broadmoor north. And oftentimes, uh, the the shoreline itself changes from underwater to mud flats. Um, so I can't specifically address a site that might provide a community-sized neighborhood park. Uh, however, as Mr. Carrisino did note, there is open space owned by the Corps of Engineers designated in the Broadmoor area uh by the Green Strip along the river there, if council can go to Exhibit One that was uh furnished for the orbiting land use amendment. And Mr. Gonzalez, I don't know if you have anything else to note about that?
Well, I I just quickly, I I think it's an opportunity for us to mention that aligning uh the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan with uh all of the existing uh policies and plans adopted by council specifically from the latest resolution on your council goals, which indicates uh an update to the Parks uh Plan uh would be very fitting with uh an adoption of the comprehensive plan because then right underneath it, the comp the Parks Plan would need to align with the comprehensive plan. And it it's going to be part of a larger effort, I think, on behalf of the city staff within all of our departments to ensure that all of our long-range planning documents align within each other. And I think the a uh the example of the Parks um not being too specific in the comp plan, but will do, will be very refined and specific in the Parks Plan is a perfect example of where that alignment needs to occur.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a follow-up, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Alvarado.
Uh, thank you for addressing uh the parks. Uh, yeah, we certainly want to be able to see parks that we're proud of um in in our city. So I I I hope we can work through uh identifying some great uh opportunities for for that in the western part. Uh, the second part I um question I had is uh, I know that this is kind of a large massing of land uses and we don't necessarily know who's going to develop or when or or how. Uh, but the process for uh zoning kind of happens now, but then what's the opportunity for folks if they 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 feel like it'd be a more appropriate um to rezone? Can you speak a little bit about how what that could look like or opportunities for folks who may own land who feel like, oh, man, I I never wanted to do commercial. I never wanted to do residential. Um, perhaps you can speak to that a little bit?
Yes, certainly. Um, um, and and uh it's important for council to recall that this amendment, this year, at this time, involves a significant expansion in one way or another to our urban boundaries. That is part of the cyclical, every eight-year update. We have the ability, the city has the ability to consider land use amendments every year if we want to. Those are directly under our control. The urban boundary adjustments are not under our control and are aligned with the eight-year cycle that the state has indicated for comprehensive plan amendments. So in just a few short years, by twenty twenty-four, we'll be doing this again for a cyclical update. But in twenty twenty-one, for example, let's assume we get adopted um relatively in short order without a lengthy appeal. We have the ability later in the year to consider land use amendments and we have that ability every year as long as it's limited to once per year.
Thank you. That puts a few of my concerns at ease.
Thank you, um, Councilmember Alvarado and Mr. White. Any other council members have any comments?
This is Councilmember Roach and I just have um one quick question in regards to comments made by Allison Cable. Um, and I I was reading through those comments just now because um I just got the memorandum at eight forty. So um, the, you know, there are comments about, you know, the concern about moving into agricultural land and I I understand that. But, you know, compact urban growth areas and making sure that we use uh what's within the city limits already to uh provide uh in quotes, missing uh middle housing. And so wanting uh Mr. White or Mr. Gonzalez, for either one of you to be able to speak to that. Um, and then as well as, you know, a continuing theme that we've talked about this year since I've been on council. Um, and that is, you know, the the subsidizing of growth into areas, uh future growth areas of the of the city um on on folks who already live in the city. And so, you know, what are we doing to reinvest in in the existing areas of Pasco that are already taxpayers um instead of subsidizing the public facilities and services in those newer areas?
Well, I uh, and Councilwoman Roach, we have a number of initiatives with the, let's call it the middle, missing middle, I think, is what Ms. uh Allison uh spoke about. Um, we are addressing through the funding we received from House Bill nineteen twenty-three, three separate code amendments that will provide additional opportunities for affordable housing. Uh, those will be going to the Planning Commission, actually, I think, in October for uh completion roughly uh summer of twenty twenty-one. Also, as council knows, we um will be receiving uh funding uh from a existing sales tax set aside through House Bill fourteen oh six. So that was a discussion, if you recall, that that occurred at the council level regarding a housing capacity plan and making sure that we uh reach out to the stakeholders and identify the issues that are most pertinent to increasing the um supply of of more affordable housing. And then I I I actually believe that through the city's existing capital improvement program, we are always seeming to address needed public facility and utility and infrastructure updates, upgrades uh through the the Pasco city limits. Uh, as council knows, one of the very real and significant problems with uh infilling in the Riverview area in particular, basically everything from road thirty, let's call it road thirty-eight west to road one hundred is very problematic because of the development pattern that occurred there in the last, let's call it, three decades. Um, we we have utilities at dead end. We have roads that don't exist. We have houses in the middle of those roads that do exist at the ends of rights of way. And we will be facing those problems for a very long time and it'll be a very long time until they go away. Um, I expect that as the urban area is enlarged, uh perhaps the development pressure on some of those very difficult infill properties will be less. But right now, we have to deal with them and they make for um serious uh negotiations with developers who are trying to do the right thing. They're trying to develop infill properties, but they are faced with uh very expensive and very complicated uh utility and road planning uh issues.
Thank you, Mr. White. And there was just one other, uh, the first gentleman who commented about traffic. And I and I don't want to, uh, you know, suggest that you are the the sole uh like problem solver when it comes to traffic. But, you know, that is something that is a constant um uh like refrain from the public to city council is about traffic, traffic, traffic. And that already exists on sixty-eight and road one hundred. And so it is a really legitimate concern when I hear that um as to how we handle that that growth in the northwest corridor of Pasco. So if you could or Mr. Gonzalez could speak to that or plans the city has to address it, that would be wonderful.
Rick, if I if I could jump in, uh, council, this is Dave Zabel again. So if you look at the traffic element in the comp plan, uh, it lists a couple hu- literally a couple hundred million dollars worth of transportation improvements that are going to happen throughout that area. Or actually throughout the entire area uh over the next twenty-year uh cycle to be able to handle the growth. Some of that is going to happen in the city because uh uh as Mr. Gonzalez uh shared with me a few minutes ago, sixty-three percent of the growth uh that we're going to be accommodating, sixty-three percent of that fifty thousand is going to occur within the existing, the current urban growth area boundary. And and the remaining uh uh percentage, seventeen thousand in the expanded UGA. So a lot of that, a lot of that traffic uh that we're talking about is going to happen within the city as well. And so you see a fairly lengthy list of projects. Now, how that's going to be funded, there's a number of ways that's that's funded. Certainly, there's existing problems. We can't ask uh development to mitigate existing problems with impact fees. That's not a legal thing for us to do. We can't ask them to mitigate to the level that they further exacerbate the situation or that they exceed uh uh your level of uh level of service standard. Which depending on the type of uh facility uh pre for your uh comp plan is, I think we can go down to a level of service D. The uh intersection at Burden and sixty-eight right now during PM peak, at least on a couple of the movements, particularly uh some of the left turns are operating probably, I I would estimate less than a less than a D, perhaps even a a high F or an E. And uh, so there definitely are some problems that we are going to have to resolve in the in the um system-wide. The the area where the new growth is going, which basically is the Broadmoor, road one hundred corridor. Uh, one, you're collecting, you're you're going to be collecting um mitigation uh fees from developers that go towards those improvements. Two, on a SEPA analysis, you know, they're going to have to demonstrate, a developer would have to demonstrate uh concurrency with our level of service standard and have to mitigate uh uh their impacts. And also, there are a number of programs, particularly around the freeway interchange- And also, there are a number of programs, particularly around the freeway interchange area, that we can participate with state and federal agencies, as well as some of the funding agencies that we talk about protecting when we're when we're discussing our legislative agendas, such as the Transportation Improvement Board and FIMCA for freight area, for freight. Steve Worley, right now, he and I had a long discussion today about programming of some federal dollars that are that are coming into the city, and council's aware, one of those big projects we did and are finishing up, it was replacing all the traffic signal controllers in the entire city, and we talked about that during the CIP phase two, a few million dollars. So all these things add up, and some of them are going to be in the new areas, some of the old areas. One of our biggest transportation projects in years, we're going to go to bid on here in another month or so, $25 million, is right in the heart of our downtown. So there's, it's not all about Road 100. I think, though, one of the, one of the real advantages we have in the work that's been done in this plan is that it, it's, I think it's done a really good job. DKS, I think, was the consultant that worked with us on the environmental impact statement. They've done a really thorough job of modeling the city. Prior comp plans, land use comp plans, didn't go to that level, and and modeling today is much different and much more predictive than it was 10 or particularly 20 years ago. And so we have a handle on what's going to happen, we're going to be able to see those projects, and the need for those projects triggered a lot earlier, and be able to plan accordingly instead of waiting. I think, you know, as I think some of us have seen on Road 68, every time we have a problem, we have to, we're putting our finger in the dike and having to scramble to try to address it. I think we're going to be able to be ahead of the curve going out the next 10, five, 10, 15 years to stay, to stay ahead of growth and be able to handle that impact. So I don't know if that answers all your question, but I did, I did want to emphasize too, though, that the amount of population that we're accommodating, 63% of it's within the current UGA. I think that's a pretty commendable figure and reflective of some of the conversations we've had in this chamber among council, as well as among the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel. Does that answer your questions, Councilwoman Roach?
More than answers it, thank you.
Okay.
Hey, this is Councilmember Milne, and I had a quick question here for Rick White. I know I brought up the, oh, the property to the north we were just talking about, I just said that, the Kohler property. I know I brought it up at another UGA discussion, and so my question is, to clarify, if we were to incorporate it into the UGA that we're talking about, and the developer only wants to put two houses per acre, if he was in the city, in the UGA, would he have to develop it more? Would he have to have more, the four houses, or would he be able to do what he wanted?
Would he be able to do two units per acre in the city?
No, I was asking, would he be forced to put in four, like what we would like to see? Or would he only, or he be able to do just two if he wanted to? I mean, it seems like density, that's what I was getting at.
Okay, I, my, my response, Mr. Milne, is that the infrastructure cost for the city would make two units per acre unfeasible from a marketing and business return standpoint. He, and and something I have never understood about the request to include the Kohler property was a 6,000-foot extension of city sewer to serve properties that have two units per acre. That, to me, makes no sense, and I don't understand how that would work. But in the city, I think that the market would take care of that, your question, it would, it would be more units per acre just because it would take more units per acre to make it pencil out. We currently do have those zoning that allows two units per acre in certain areas of the city, but they're not developing right now.
Okay, so if if this area was in, though, it would be, he could either do two or, but it couldn't be something that we would force him to put four units per acre?
Well, I think we could. If you're in the urban area, it doesn't mean you're in the city limits. You, we may not be, and we're actually working on a very similar proposal with the former Harris Farm property. They are asking for city utilities. We are going to enter into a development agreement process where the density will be much greater than what it currently is designated as residential transition. Through a development agreement, we could, in fact, designate density higher than two units per acre.
Okay, I mean, that, that's if you're going to, then you're lucky, more houses there. I mean, that's, that's what I would assume, but, okay, thank you.
Mr. Councilmember Maloney, do you have a word?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I've had, I've taken the time to review these documents repeatedly over the, over the months and years that we've been in this process. I, and so I appreciate exactly how much goes into it. I think tonight really made clear what was stated at the very beginning of this, which I think Mr. White stated, that this will not make everyone happy. We heard opposing viewpoints tonight. Certainly, we saw opposing viewpoints in the, in the comments received, and I know we've referred that in the past. As a, for instance, we're being asked to include additional residential within our UGA. At the same time, we heard a comment directly before that that said, please have less residential within the UGA so that it impacts the traffic less. We're hearing traffic's concern, but we're also hearing, don't include commercial, which Mr. Gonzalez and Mr. White have informed us in the past, and I think was emphasized again tonight, that commercial, pockets of commercial within residential decreases traffic counts on the major arterial routes, because you don't have to hit the freeway, you don't have to head down to Road 68 every time you want to get, you want to go to the grocery store or, or have some sort of service or go to, or even go to work when you've, from an office building standpoint. I'm, I'm more reticent to change and worry about zoning, like, for example, whether or not we include something as commercial or not, because that's certainly something, as indicated, we can change whenever. Every year, at least, we can make it, we can look at redesignating that in the comp plan. However, the changes to the UGA, this is, this is a more rare opportunity because of the amount of effort going into it. So I certainly take under strong advisement that idea of, do we want to change that UGA to include that, the Kohler property? However, I think Mr. Zabel's points about the fact that this has gone through an extensive and exhaustive review process, it's been recommended by the Planning Commission. I, that's, that's why we have a planning commission. We will have some opportunities to address it in the future, but I, I don't see, I'm not, I don't see us rethinking all of that, all of that work right here in this meeting, especially with the, with the indicated pros and cons between the person asking for the change and our, our staff. You know, I had a number of notes here that, of questions I had about reminding us about process, but I think we've covered them all. I guess, at the, at the end of the day, there's, there's things that I wish we could have in here. I know that we're going to have a lot of work ahead of us, and a lot of flexibility is going to be needed to, to implement this correctly, and there will be additional opportunities to, to make changes as, as we go along, but that this is the best we can do at this time. And so, so given the fact that we're, that, that half the, half the responses seem to be wanting changes that, that contradict the other half, I will continue to support staff and, after recommendation, the Planning Commission's recommendation, and at this time, I'm, I'm going to be supportive of this.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. And so my, my last comments would be that, you know, this has been a long process, and again, it's going to be very difficult to make everybody happy. It's been, it's been through the, you know, as you guys have indicated, it's been through, you know, this is not a hearing, this is a, a time that we should have had all the information and should come to a vote. So with that, would the council be in agreement to just go for the vote and see, see how, how it comes out? So if that's the case, Mayor Protem Barajas, would you entertain a motion?
Absolutely, just a second, let me open that up real quick. Here we are. Motion to adopt Resolution Number 3997, declaring the preferred urban growth area for the city of Pasco, and Resolution Number 3998, adopting the 2018-2038 Comprehensive Plan, including the future land use map and final non-project environmental impact statement, and further authorize submittal of both to Franklin County.
There's been a motion, do I hear a second?
Councilmember Alvarado, I'll second.
And it's seconded by Mr. Alvarado. So there's been a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3997, declaring the preferred urban growth area for the city of Pasco, and Resolution Number 3998, adopting the 2018-2038 Comprehensive Plan, including the future land use map and final non-project environmental impact statement, and further authorize submittal of both to Franklin County. With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
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 Oppose, same sign?
Nay.
Let the record reflect, was there one nay or two nays?
That's two, that's with Pete.
Okay, so there's two nays, that would be Councilmember Milne and Councilmember Serrano with a nay vote. With that, the motion passes to approve the resolution. So I know it's really tough, but thank you for that, council, and we'll see how we can work with our developers and the others to, to see how, how we can do this. I mean, to me, it was just, it's just so complicated, and it just seems like we have to get this going, and we've had a lot of time and put a lot of effort into it, we're just going to have to work with this as a basis and see how we can move forward. So thank you very much for the decision, council. With that, we're going to go to item number nine on unfinished business, where we changed the--
Quick, I need to hear your response.
Excuse me, was somebody trying to say something?
Yeah, this is Eric Ferguson, your city attorney.
Oh, yes, Mr. Ferguson.
Yeah, I'm sorry, a part of that was cutting out. I just need to confirm that, did we take a vote on each resolution separately?
Let me look.
It was one motion. It was written up as one motion.
Does that need to change?
It does, yeah, those need to be adopted separately. A motion and second, and then vote for each resolution.
So, so there's two of them there? So there's two resolutions in there?
That's correct.
So do we need to technically do anything about the first motion that we just passed?
Uh, no, I think if you, if you adopt them each separately, under Robert Schultz's order, you should be fine.
So, Mr. City Attorney, let me just ask you a procedural question, just a motion, a simple motion to pass, resolution, was it?
3997.
3997, and just leave it at that? And then a second motion to pass 3998 is sufficient?
Yeah, so, yeah, it looks like the, the motion that was in front of council was to adopt resolution, and then it moved right into the and resolution for the next one. So if you, if we break up the motion where we stop, to adopt resolution, I guess it's with 3997, declaring the preferred urban growth area for the city of Pasco, I think you should be fine, and then start the next motion right there.
Okay, so that'd be motion one, motion two would be to adopt a resolution Number 3998, adopting the 2018 to 2038 Comprehensive Plan.
That's correct.
Okay.
Do we need to do anything with the motion that we just passed approving both of them?
I don't think we need to do anything with that, I think we just need to pass two separate motions, one for 3997, one for 3998.
Okay, council, Mayor Protem Barajas, would you like to entertain the motion for the first resolution, Number 3997, separately?
Absolutely. I move to adopt Resolution Number 3997.
I'll second.
So there's been a motion to adopt Resolution 3997, declaring the preferred urban growth area for the city of Pasco, and it was seconded by Councilmember Alvarado. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Aye. Oppose, same sign?
Nay.
Nay.
With the two councilmembers opposing it. Thank you, the motion passes, and now entertain a motion to pass Resolution Number 3998, please.
I move to approve Resolution Number 3998, adopting the 2018-2038 Comprehensive Plan, including the future land use map and final non-project environmental impact statement, and further authorize submittal of both to Franklin County.
Councilmember Alvarado, I'll second.
So there's been a motion to pass Resolution Number 3998, and seconded by Mr. Alvarado. All those in favor signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Nay.
Nay.
And two nays from Councilmember Serrano and Councilmember Milne. Thank you. Mr. Ferguson, are you content?
Yeah, thank you, yes.
Thank you for--
I'll sleep better tonight, thank you.
Thank you for noting that, Mr. Ferguson, and keeping us in line. So next, we'll move on to item number nine, unfinished business, where we'll discuss the item that was taken out of the consent agenda, and that would be the resolution granting limited authority to the city manager for land easement right-of-way acquisitions. Councilmember Roach, you had an issue or a question with this item?
Yes, sorry, just want to make sure, unmute my mic. Just wanted to follow up on my sentiment from last week's public workshop, which was that, you know, I was struggling with relinquishing what I believe is city council's roles and responsibilities here. I understand that it's being proposed for the sake of efficiency, and I guess I'd just like to hear from other councilmembers as to where they're at on it and why.
Any other councilmembers have any comments?
Yeah, this is Councilmember Maloney. I'd appreciate us, staff, talking us through what changes were made and, and how that addresses the comments that were made at our previous meeting.
Okay, let me, let me ask first if Director Worley was on the line, if he's not, I'll take care of it.
Yes, I am, can you hear me?
Yes, Mr. Worley.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The items that were changed in the resolution for the delegation was to clarify some of the comments that we heard at the last presentation to council on this item. And if my recollection is correct, some of the clarifications that were requested were, where does this delegation apply? And so we made it really clear in the changes to Section 1 of the resolution, where we indicated that the granting of limited authority is to capital or council-approved capital projects that are included in the adopted capital improvement program or approved budget. So if it is not within those two documents, then this limited delegation of authority would not apply. And the other clarification that I recall hearing is that there are some right-of-way acquisitions that are more complicated. For example, when we are acquiring a property where owner, either business or residential, is being relocated, that then would be required to come to council and would not be part of this delegation of limited authority. So those are the two big changes that we heard. There were a couple other minor changes that we added, and that had to do with the issue of temporary and permanent easements. There were, there was wording in the resolution-- Uh, there were s- there was wording in the resolution that talked about um, uh, releasing uh, a- and vacating easements, but we added also acquire easements, because that's part of uh, a normal process that we go through related to capital projects. If we're getting easements for utilities and those kinds of things for extension of store or water, then that's pretty common to go and acquire the easements associated with it as well. So, we, if it's less than three hundred thousand, the idea is the city manager would have the authority to do that for those easements, but again, that would be for projects that are included in the capital improvement program or in the approved budget. So, hopefully that answers your question, if not, I'll try to answer as best I can.
So, I'll, I guess I'll continue, um, so when we talk about the approved CIP, obviously, that's a very specific delineated set of projects, um, no ambiguity there. However, in our um, when we're looking at our operating budget tends to be a little, um, I don't wanna say looser, that's not exactly accurate, but it's certainly not to the level of specificity that our capital improvement plan is. Uh, certainly for kinds of a capital improvement plan, um, um, us having pre-approved those particular projects, understanding uh, the scale and the cost of them, acquiring property um, within a limited authority makes sense and and streamlining that, I think will, will make some sense. Um, but uh, when talking about operating budget, can again, some of those line items are are fairly broad, um, how how are we to be assured that that's that those particular projects are something we know about and have um, are 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 aware that we're going to acquire that sort of uh, um, property for?
Yeah, as, as I recall, as part of the adopted biennium budget, there is a list that is usually attached to the budget that lists all of the approved capital projects. And the capital projects are separate from the operating side of the budget, but there's a separate resolution, I believe, that lists all of the capital projects that are included in the biennium budget. And so, with the wording that is proposed tonight, it does say council-approved capital projects that are included in the budget and or the CIP. So, hopefully, the idea is that if it's not in the list of projects that are in the budget or in the CIP, then any right-of-way acquisitions outside of those would have to come back to council because they would not be part of this limited authority for the city manager.
Understood, so it's in a list of capital projects that are either in the biennium and or are in the CIP, but not in in any other budget documents or other planning documents?
I believe that is the case, yes.
Yeah, I, I, let me jump in, perhaps a better word might, than included, might be specified. I think that's probably, probably would uh, indicate that the project would have to be listed either in the, in the uh, approved budget or the CIP, consistent with uh, section one.
I think with that, with that sort of specificity, again, I, I think the, the real concern I, I was certainly having, I don't wanna speak for anyone else in council, but that what, my biggest concern was that, um, this could look an awful like a uh, a blank check, so to speak, um, and making sure that we've, we've specifically pre-approved those projects, um, I think would, would add, would that uh, sufficient comfort level for me to, to support this. So, perhaps that language, um, perhaps we can um, modify the language of this, um, as we approve it tonight, um, would be, would meet my would, would meet my, my uh, needs, I guess, um, to receive my support.
Thank you, councilmember Maloney, is that something that you would wanna change before we pass?
No, you, you could, you could modify it, uh, with the uh, inclu- with the uh, excuse me, you can pass it with the modifications discussed. We, we know that means, and what our city clerks paying attention, uh, specified rather than included in that section.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel, uh, so councilwoman Roach, uh, are you satisfied with the discussion?
Yes, I appreciate the, the clarifications on those, the modified language, it's, it's, it's new to me, and so I just wanna be absolutely, you know, uh, you know, uh, clear on what I'm agreeing to.
Sure, absolutely. Thank you.
This is uh, councilmember Alvarado, just a quick comment, if I may?
Yes, councilmember Alvarado.
Um, and so I, I think a lot of uh, kinda what we done here and also with uh, spending authority uh, to uh, in some ways, uh, give a greater um, abilities for uh, for city manager to perform certain tasks, uh, could create a sense of efficiency, I think uh, we, um, our, our current city manager has demonstrated to be a good steward of um, uh, you know, of the, of trust, and, but I, you know, I think it might be a good conversation, um, in, you know, I, I think as uh, councilmember Roach had stated, maybe a, a couple decades from now, whenever we are looking at a new uh, city manager, uh, to um, perhaps think about walking some of those back, um, and so that's just my comment.
Okay, thank you for that, councilmember Alvarado.
Is there a way to add language to the resolution where it would, it would terminate upon um, the, you know, succession of a different city manager?
That, that's a question for legal.
So, this is Serrano, and I've had kind of the same concerns, I don't, I don't think that's the appropriate approach, uh, just termination with a new city manager. Um, I mean, I think that's kinda like a vote of no confidence before we hire that individual. That said, I do think we should find a way, a- and quite frankly, the process would be do the same thing over, but reverse course, right? Um, if we find that it's being abused, because I, I, I too don't wanna look back and say, what did I offer, you know, as one of the councilmembers in two thousand twenty to the city manager, and again, we, we have no concern that current staff is going to abuse this process. Um, so, I, I too am open to some type of termination, but again, I think quite frankly, the easiest way to terminate it is reverse course and uh, rescind the uh, the uh, resolution at some point in the future if necessary.
Mayor.
So.
Thank you, councilmember Serrano, Mr. Zabel.
I would say response to councilmember Serrano about that is that, you know, how do we prepare our future council for, for that, if they're in that situation with a, a city manager that they don't, they don't have that same sort of faith in, so, um, and I'm open to hearing what eh, what your ideas are on that, because this is something that I've not encountered before.
Mayor, if I could,
Yes, Mr.
Jump in for a second. So, here's a suggestion, and I think part of it is, you know, there, there are things, council, that you know, with a delegation of authority, they happen. Right, you, you don't know every piece of it, and I think that's the part about delegating is uh, that kind of accountability piece you're looking at, whether that's uh, the current city manager or a future city manager, the current council or a future city council, so one of the things we've done with contracts, for instance, is we have a reporting uh, requirement, so you see it on your monthly report. Uh, my apologies, I should've thought about that when we did this. Uh, a particular proposal to you is uh, if I sign a contract exceeding a hundred thousand dollars, even though my signing authority is up to three hundred, our policy is, is that you see it on your monthly uh, general fund report. That's, I think that's on the third page, and it'll list whatever contract, significant contracts we've, we've signed, whether it's an engineering contract or contract for services or what have you, and we could do something similar uh, to this, we could set a threshold, and uh, while that doesn't change the authority, it keeps council constantly, monthly, actually, alerted uh, to that kind of activity, and if it becomes a concern for a future council, then they're aware of it, it's not happening without their knowledge because it got delegated ten years prior or twenty years prior or what have you. And uh, that council can then take action to, to review the uh, uh, the policy. So, so as a suggestion, I, I don't know that we could pass this resolution tonight with and what Dave said, you know, I'd, I'd like to maybe bring it back, if that's acceptable to council with a shot at a, yeah, at a section, uh, an additional section in the, in, within the resolution that would provide for uh, that kinda check and balance thing that uh, you're, 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 seem to be discussing tonight.
So, we won't take any action on this item tonight and hopefully come back?
Yeah, I, I could bring it back to the next meeting and uh, with, with basically similar language to what we have uh, for, for our professional service agreements.
Okay.
If that's, if that's something council's interested in.
Yeah, with the council, uh, what would your thought be uh, to go, have Dave, um, city manager Dave, go through and uh, and make the appropriate changes so we can feel more comfortable with this?
Yeah, and I'm wondering if perhaps, uh, this is councilmember Alvarado, uh, perhaps it may be prudent to uh, uh, in the same token, look at the spending capacity as well, um, I'm not sure if that'd be uh, amenable to council, just an idea.
Thank you, councilmember Alvarado. All right, then we'll just, go, go ahead.
This is councilmember Maloney, um, sorry for, for, for having to speak up twice on this, um, I just, I guess for, from, from my perspective, we've already delegated a pretty massive amount of authority to any city manager, and I hope a future council that doesn't trust their city manager would fire him and hire a new one. So, there's an inherent uh, termination clause in um, in, invested in, in city council, so I think the extra reporting is useful, um, I think bill, I think uh, um, prudence on um, on, on scoping um, delegation of authority like this may, make a ton of sense. Um, and um, but, but perhaps if we're, if we're starting to feel like we need to really, really fine tune this, then perhaps this is just simply not something that this council's interested in. Um, and I'm certainly, I'm, there, there's a little bit of unease I have in just the, the delegation of such an important authority, so um, um, I could be, I could be convinced that maybe that this count, that we simply shouldn't adopt this. Uh, but if we spend, if we have to come back again and again, I, I, I feel like perhaps um, this is maybe isn't the right time and the right right delegation.
Thank you, councilmember Maloney. Well, I would say we uh, give it one attempt, and um, if it doesn't, if it doesn't work out, then we can just either vote no or uh, or not adopt, not adopt the, the resolution or the uh, the motion. So, we can move on. It, is council agreeable to that?
Yes.
Okay. I, I heard about four yeses, so we'll just move on and uh, and see what Dave can bring back to us in the next regular meeting. Um, okay, we'll move right along to our next item, and that would be new business, and I know Mr. Zabel has a couple things he'd like to mention.
So, thank you, thank you again, mayor, council, um, a couple things uh, uh, started off with uh, our new testing site, I wanted to just give you some numbers, that is um, uh, really being utilized, the first week, we had five hundred and thirty-four uh, people tested at the test site. Uh, the second week, uh, which we just concluded, we, we shut down on Tuesday and Wednesday. It's uh, open Saturday and Sunday, to, that, that way we have seven, seven day a week coverage, including the uh, National Guard site. But uh, again, over five hundred, so for the two week total, we're about a thousand and sixty-nine tests, uh, which is uh, I think a pretty impressive number for something that just cranked up, today, we, today alone, we had three hundred and eighty-six tests. Yeah, so a lot, lot of awareness out there uh, to that. Secondly, I did send out some guidelines that we got last Wednesday from uh, State Department of Health, I know some of you have had asked about Halloween, and uh, and I know you're being asked about Halloween, and so tips for a safer Halloween, and then we, we are gonna do a, a Halloween effort, as council's aware, uh, well, may not, Halloween may not be aware, but the la- about two, two, three years ago, we started a a trick-or-treat thing in city hall, and uh, it grew from the first year to the next year to the next, and uh, was pretty popular, staff enjoyed it, uh, the kids that uh, visit city hall and during the, during the months, uh, with their folks to pay water bills or whatever, they enjoyed it. Obviously, we can't do that this year, but uh, Angela Pashan has put together a program, I think, that'll be uh, useful for the, for the community, Dan, I'll have her jump in a couple min- minutes and just uh, share what that is with you.
Um, good evening, mayor and council again, uh, so yes, last year we did a spooky city hall trick-or-treating event, we had over two hundred kids come uh, for a fun and safe community event. Uh, we're getting closer, obviously, to Halloween, and it's gonna look and feel very different this year, but staff is working to provide safe Halloween packs for families. Uh, just as we did with the small business reopening packets, we're working with local vendors to procure items, so we're gonna be putting some candy bags, we're gonna do kids face masks, hand sanitizers, glow sticks, uh, the safe ideas and tips, as well as a scavenger hunt that uh, families can do together. We're working on coordinating some pickup events in the community, and we're also already have three events to Pasco Parks and Recreation that will be handing out these events or uh, these packets. Um, and one, one of those uh, opportunities is the Hallow Weekend Cinema on October twenty-third and twenty-fourth, uh, so two different movies, uh, Drive-In Style will be available, and then the Halloween trunk or treat uh, on Halloween itself at the Pasco Softball Sporting Complex, so we'll make sure to get that information out so families can come and pick up their safe Halloween packs. Um, and that's all I have.
And so, one other item I had, uh, and if we could get uh, that up, thank you. So, we do have a, a presentation to make, unfortunately, uh, you know, we, with COVID, we really can't make it, but uh, we were contacted earlier this morning by the uh, the new branch manager, uh, Ibrahim Mendoza, as well as Elizabeth Burtner, Elizabeth, you've talked to before, she's addressed the council on behalf of STCU uh, with respect to public art, and uh, her project was uh, was The Wraps. And uh, they've been big supporters of the city's efforts to get a arts and, and culture commission, uh, they have their branch operational now in, in Pasco and and uh, in, you know, in the times of COVID and so forth, they can't have the branch opening that uh, they'd really like to have. Uh, you know, where they can have the public in and, and uh, and do the things that uh, that a business like that normally would do in those situations. But they still wanted to make an impact on the, on the community, and uh, and uh, I guess sort of announce their arrival in Pasco, uh, I think the next slide says they're here for good. And uh, those are some of the folks from the bank, but uh, if you get a shot on this, uh, today they delivered us a check for ten thousand dollars. Uh, and it's one of these giant checks, if you can't see, I, hopefully I'm not holding up here for nothing. But uh, yeah, it was a check for ten thousand dollars uh, in celebration of the newest branch in Pasco, they wanna support the Pasco and Arts Commission with an unrestricted gift, and we hope this donation, their words, we hope this donation helps you support your mission of arts and culture in the city of Pasco. And uh, that came from Elizabeth Burtner and the, and the entire branch uh, community development manager, so.
Wow, I, I,
So, that's pretty exciting.
I believe that deserves an applause for all, everybody who's.
Just, just in case there's any, any, anybody that's curious, we did actually get a real check today too, so, not just a big paper one.
Well, I, as, as mayor of the city of Pasco, I thank STCU for their donation and their um, their uh, the new beginnings here in Pasco, and I just wanna appreciate what you do, and I'm sure the the Arts Commission is gonna be very excited to, to see and hear about this, so thank you very much, and welcome to the city of Pasco. Is that all Mr. Zabel?
That's it.
All right. Okay, then uh, there is just one note, I just got a note, uh, Mr. uh, Portugal uh, sent me a note saying that he tried to get on and speak uh, to the proclamation on the, the on the Hispanic uh, proclamation, so uh, he regrets not being able to get on, but wanted me to share with the council that he was trying very hard, and he thinks uh, thanks us for this proclamation, so with that, uh, we're gonna go to item twelve, and we do have a need for an executive, an executive session tonight. The executive session uh, will, uh, the, will last approximately twenty minutes, and this uh, execu- executive session is to establish the sell price or lease amount of real property per the RCW forty-two dot thirty dot one ten one B C. So, with that, uh, we are gonna leave this meeting and go to another meeting for the executive session, and then we'll be back to adjourn this meeting, so with that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, oh, yes.
For Roach.
Go ahead.
I don't have, I don't have a link to that uh session. So um if I could be sent a link to that session, that'd be great. I only received one for the regular meeting.
Okay, does anybody else have that issue?
Uh I do as well.
I received an email at three forty-three P, three forty-three P M from John Funfar saying executive session tonight, in which that had the link.
I've had an ongoing issue with uh receiving. People do send them to me at the time that they send them, but I just don't. But I see that Mr. Ratkai has sent me one, and thank you, Mr. Ratkai.
Did you send it to Council, uh Mayor Protem Barhas as well?
Yes, sir, I did.
Okay. Uh anybody else? Then it is nine fifty, and we'll have a twenty-minute executive session. We'll be back. Uh this meeting uh is now going into executive session. Thank you.
Could you send that link to me as well? This is Eric.
Could you send that link to me as well? This is Eric.